Everybody, thanks for coming to the meeting tonight. We're gonna delay for about five minutes while we're waiting for one of the other commissioners to show up and then we'll get started. Drew, this is Commissioner Hanson. Can you hear me okay? Or Kathy, could you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Drew, are you there and available and ready to go?
He's here.
Perfect. Welcome, everybody, to the Planning Commission meeting for March 3rd, 2021. My name is Commissioner Hanson. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. We may have another commissioner that shows up a little bit late this evening. Drew, with the commissioners that we have here, we are a go for voting on all aspects. Is that correct? I'm gonna assume that we are. This evening, Commissioner Staley let us know that he were, I'm sorry, Councilman Staley let us know he's not gonna be able to attend this evening. I'd like to recognize Councilman Ivy over here. Any complaints directed that way? Just kidding. Thank you for doing that. As City Council Representative, he oversees the planning commission meetings and keeps us informed from things from the City Council. Tonight, we're gonna have an opening prayer by Commissioner Musso, followed by myself. I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll go from there.
Our kind of gracious heavenly Father, we will be glad that it's a great season and give you thanks for this opportunity to meet as a planning commissioner to meet with the citizens of the city. We're grateful for this beautiful community which we live in and thankful that we live in a free country and that we have the opportunity to express our opinions openly and freely. We'd ask at this time to please bless everyone's efforts in this room tonight that there might be civil discord, that we might be able to discuss things in a, in a manner which is appropriate and that we might respect each and every person in this room. I say to please bless our efforts on the behalf of the city and the citizens in the city that you may make decisions that will benefit all those involved. We pray for these things, humbly in Jesus' name.
Would y'all please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd like you to reply of the United States of America to the Republic of America, which stands on the God, in the empire, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, Commissioners, I'll go to Agenda Item Number 1A, which is approval of the agenda for March 3rd, 2021. Looking for a motion and a second.
Does Commissioner Musso, I make a motion that we approve the agenda for March 3rd, 2021, as stated.
Commissioner Anderson, I second that.
Individual vote, I'm sorry, all in favor and approving the agenda for tonight with no changes. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Agenda item is passed and approved for the agenda for March 3rd. Agenda item 2A, approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. We've had a chance to look those over if there's any changes. Let's please let Kathy know at this time. Otherwise, I look for a motion to approve the minutes as well.
Commissioner Anderson, I, did Kathy get the revisions? I sent her some revisions earlier. I don't know if they've been incorporated or not.
Kathy, were you able to hear that? And do you have those revisions that you received and comfortable putting into the report?
Yes, and they're the ones that are printed in front of you.
You wanna look at those from there, Anderson? Are you good there? Oh, you. Is that why you left me a note, Kathy, that said the printed minutes have the corrections?
Yes.
Got it.
We're sharp as a tack in this room, let me tell you.
Nobody's looking. Kathy, we're gonna take just a second to review those minutes and we'll vote in a second. Okay, I'll look for a motion on the minutes from our previous meeting. Item 2A.
Commissioner Anderson, I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 17th, 2021.
Commissioner Musso, I second that.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Minutes have been approved. Item number 3A. Looking for, this is the first time we've gone through this, so Drew, you may have to help me through it, but we're looking for a pro temp chair for the Planning Commission for nights that the chair is not available. If anybody wants to volunteer for that, or if you'd like to nominate, whether knowing or not, each other or one of the others here, we're gonna look for that. Is there anybody who would like to do? Raise a hand. I know Commissioner Bullock, you've been able to be an alternate, but you can also nominate somebody if anybody wants to nominate, whether they're here or not. You could nominate somebody and take that up with them later. By seniority, I think Commissioner Fitzonpu is, has a seniority on the commission whose term is up this year. Just not clear what month it is. We think it's June. I'm not exactly positive.
July.
July, okay. His term is up in July, but he would be eligible for a nomination as well as anybody here or anybody's not.
Does Commissioner Musso, I nominate Commissioner Fitzonpu to be the Chairman Pro Temp.
Commissioner Anderson, I second that.
I got a motion to nominate Commissioner Fitzonpu to be the Planning Commission Chair Pro Temp. I have a second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting. Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Hanson. I'm an aye as well. The motion passes four to zero. We'll make sure my man though.
But you don't show up.
Item number four, declaration of abstentions or conflicts with any of the agenda items this evening. As just a reminder, a financial interest in any of the items here would qualify. And any business conflicts. Does anybody here on the commission have anything to see me praying at the item? Okay. I do not. We'll go to item 5A. This is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the City Council for the Crimson Park Townhomes preliminary plat amendment that is located approximately 550 East Treasure Valley Road. The purpose of the amendment is to add three units in the future. Explosion area noted on the approved plat. The applicant is Ryan Thomas. Drew, I'll turn the time over to you for the staff report.
Sorry, that's actually the expansion area, not explosion, but hey. Gotta be 20, 221, whatever it takes. If you guys remember, Mr., let's see, what was that? I think Mr. Mom, the old movie, but anyway. Moving along, the applicant has requested an amendment to the preliminary plat, as stated, for Crimson Park Townhomes. The reason for this amendment, as stated by the chair, is to add three more townhome units to the development. Recently, the approved PUD zoning was amended in adding the extra units to this particular plat. The applicant is now pursuing the amended preliminary plat that he might go forward. Staffs reviewed the proposed amended preliminary plat and finds it conforms to the PUD zoning at this particular location, also is in conformance with the subdivision ordinance and other ordinances within the city. Therefore, staff would like to recommend that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the amended preliminary plat for the Crimson Park Townhome subdivision onto the City Council, and that would be based on the original findings and subject to the original conditions, which were approved back on October 23rd of 2019. Now, just so you know, I'm just gonna get my little annotator here and I'll show you the particular units. We're basically adding three, these three here. Right down here, 109, 110, 111 are currently showing another unit right along 111, which would have been 112. But they're adding in again these three, and so they took one off of this fourplex here, which was right here. It used to be a fourplex. Moved one of them up here to make a fourplex with the three units that they're adding. So just to clarify that for you. Originally, this was, this was broken off and left basically right through here, called future expansion, because they weren't quite sure how this intersection right here was gonna play out. But since the zoning and the original approval, this has all been taken care of for this to tie in and this road to head out to Washington Fields Road through this way. And Treasure Valley comes into this T-intersection now. So that's, that's why we're here tonight, to amend this plat, to get these three extra units on the preliminary plat. So I'll be glad to answer any questions the Commissioners might have on this amended preliminary plat for the Crimson Park Townhomes.
Make sure you have any questions for staff regarding this item. I have one, Drew. Could you clarify and confirm with me again, there's, is there a six-foot block wall that surrounds this property? Up against the sidewalk in the streets there?
Yeah, you can see the privacy wall is written right here. And then this is a, this black line right here is also a privacy wall.
Is there, are there any gates or access points that the residents can walk through to access those streets, or is it gonna be solid all the way around?
You know, I'm not sure. I don't know if the applicants here, that would kinda be up to them. They probably wouldn't be required to, because they have full public streets, you know, to run through the project. But that would be something probably, I'd leave, you know, developer could if he wanted, but that's while, if they're with us, then that's why I'd rather have them answer that if they're here or on the phone.
Okay. And my second question was, in our staff report, we had a a rendering, if you will, of the garbage can receptacle area, and I just wanted to clarify, so I understood it, make sure I understood correctly. Is that gonna be, is it gated on all four sides essentially, or will the trash cans be visible from the street or anywhere else on the property?
No, that's what this wall, this black line they're showing right here, that would be from the street view. So they're basically just putting in a, you know, a wall to block the view from the street down here, and it's open. It's open, you know, here and here, so they'll wheel them out, out to the street.
Yeah. One of my thoughts was, if it's blocked from the street, that's great, but because this is common area, you're not being blocked from the neighbors looking out their backyard. I mean, to see the neighbor behind you, to see their trash cans. I was curious what that might have looked like, and if you've given any thoughts to fencing these in on at least two sides? Or three with the house, that other, that south side or north side.
Yeah, we never talked about that in the zone change, so I think they've added this, you know, with the, just because this is what they're gonna be doing with the person who's actually gonna build these out now.
Okay. This, Commissioners, do you have any other questions for staff before I open this up to public hearing?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Bullock. Drew, up there where the units, 112, 113, and 114, that road looks like it just dead ends right there?
Yes.
Does it need to have some sort of turnaround for emergency vehicles?
Actually, I'm gonna have, is Chief Evans on with us tonight?
Yes, he is.
And I know you've looked at this. You wanna answer that?
If I remember right, I can see it, but if I remember right, it's under 150 feet long without measuring it again. Does that look right, Drew? I can't see the measurements that well.
Yeah, it's actually the measurement from here, you know, like, let me get my pencil.
Well, each unit is 26 feet wide, so.
Yeah, that's why I say, so it's 100, it's less than 150 from here to here.
So that's where the code would require the turnaround is, the dead end has to be over 100, 150 feet or longer, so that, that little section there would not require one. Doesn't require one by the fire code as far as it goes.
Drew, this is Commissioner Anderson. And I guess adding, taking away one unit and adding three units doesn't increase the number of units a lot, but what, what's the parking situation like near? Is there sufficient parking for everything? Or, I mean, a lot of times these townhome communities can get pretty cramped and pretty tight with people using their garages for storage, and then you get cars and vehicles everywhere. With this adding a few more units, again, it's not adding a lot, but is there sufficient parking currently?
Yeah, cuz, yeah, cuz just so you know, each unit is a two-car garage with the double driveway on it. So they meet, you know, in the garage, but if they end up, you know, taking it, they still have two parking stalls, you know, basically out here. And then, and so what I'm gonna do, let me, I gotta take this off and I'm gonna scroll down. And as you can see, we have stalls built around with, you know, throughout the development. You know, this is an example here. Here. And then there's more, you can see all around here that are basically put in for visitor parking. So that's what those extra stalls are for. And so by code, they have to have one parking stall per three and a half units extra, and they've got that. Does that answer your question okay?
Yes, so even with the additional units, they still, they still have sufficient parking?
Yeah. Because they'd only need one more visitor parking. Actually, they wouldn't need any, because it's just the three, you know, you need three and a half, but still, if it was, it would only add one more visitor parking requirement. I think they had a few above the, the standard.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? If not, at this time, I'll open item 5A, open the public hearing. Just as a reminder, if any of those here in attendance would like to offer their comments or suggestions or speak in this public meeting, as you approach the microphone, please state your name, so we can have that for the record. Kathy takes notes on all of our meetings and includes everybody who speaks and their names. Please be clear as you can be and relevant as you can be to the item that's on the agenda item. And the last, and it seems to be the hardest, is please try to limit your comments to three minutes or less. It goes by very quickly when you're up there, I assure you. It's just an effort to be cognizant and aware of everybody's time. It's not because we don't want to hear what you have to say. Is there anybody here to, that would like to speak about item 5A? Eldon, did we have any comments by chance that might have come in online? Okay. I'd like to make a motion at this time to close the public hea, I'm sorry. I'd like, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing on 5A.
Commissioner Musso, so moved.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
Got a first and a second. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed. If we have the developer either in chambers or online or on the phone, I would like to ask the questions to him that I brought up earlier. If that's possible, about the trash receptacles and about possible gates in the community on the rock wall, whether or not you want or don't want or have plans to do that.
My name is Mark Burgess. Ryan, last minute, couldn't make it, asked me to film for him. I'm gonna be the builder on the project.
Mic up a little bit. Thank you.
Any better?
Better.
As far as the wall, it's a six-foot block wall around the perimeter. At this point, we don't have any plans on putting gates through, through that to the public streets. We could add another wall on the other side of the trash area if that would make you, if that would help.
I personally would like to see that, and I, I didn't think that would be too big of an ask, just if we're gonna try to cover it on one side, let's cover it on the other, that would affect the residents.
That'll help keep the trash enclosed and where it needs to be too, so.
Well, and somebody looking out that side window, you know, they're gonna look into it. I mean, it's gonna make that mark, that's gonna make that unit more marketable for you all, so.
The only reason I asked about the gates, it seems to be something as, as development continues over there with commercial coming at some point. I just was wondering if it would make it accessible and easier for people to walk through gates to get to access, or get to the commercial that will take place in the future. Not a requirement for me, I was just asking. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mark this evening, Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Commissioners, if there's no other questions for staff on item 5A, I look for a motion.
This is Commissioner Musso. I make a motion that we recommend to I don't, I gotta find out what I'm gonna say. We recommend approval of the amended preliminary plat for the Crimson Park Townhome subdivision located at approximately 550 East Treasure Valley Road. And it goes on to the City Council for approval. Subject to the standard findings, which are items 1 through 14 in the staff report.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
First by Musso, a second by Anderson. Individual voting. Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Hanson. I'm an aye as well. Item 5A is passed unanimously. We'll send on to City Council for approval. Now, on item number 6A. This is a public hearing as well for consideration and recommendation to the City Council, a request for the Rusted Hills Phase 3, lots 47 through 52. These six lots to be well, we kinda laughed at this, I'll come back to that, but vacation located approximately at 3342 South, 3358 South, South Communal Real. Applicants are Ralph and Catherine Staley. And just for the record, I think everybody's clear on this, and as Commissioners, we joked about this earlier. This is not to bring vacation homes to the Rusted Hills Development. When we first got our packets, it made it look like that. This is not to bring vacation homes in that area. Drew, I'll turn the time over to you for a staff report.
Thank you. Applicants request an approval to vacate six lots out of the existing Rusted Hills Phase. Thank you. Applicants requesting approval to vacate six lots out of the existing Rusted Hills Phase 3 subdivision. These are lots 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, and 52. These are owned by the state, the Stady families or others that may have bought into one of those other lots, not sure if they're non-family, but sorry, I'm getting, my throat's getting kind of tight. The reason for this request of the vacation of these lots, in other words, the removal of, the taking out of these lots is due to an oversight that was back at the final plating of Rusted Hills Phase 3, where that was recorded. The Stady family, Ralph and Catherine, were co-applicants and owners, along with the other developer, Mr. Doug Dennett, when the Rusted Hills subdivision was going through the development process. There was an agreement between the two parties that when the plat was recorded, that the six lots in question, again, 47 through 52, were not to be part of the homeowners association nor the restricted, restricted by the CCNRs of Rusted Hills Phase 3. Unfortunately, when the plat was recorded, along with the CCNRs, these six lots were accidentally or mistakenly left in with the rest of the lots of the subdivision. The plat vacation, application is trying to fix the oversight of the six lots accidentally left under control of the HOA and the CCRs of Rusted Hills Phase 3. Staffs reviewed the, reviewed the proposed vacation of the Rusted Hills Phase 3 subdivision finds no concerns by the city to not allow the removal of these six lots. Staff's only request is that an applicant, an application for a minor subdivision needed to run concurrently with the vacation of these lots at the time they were vacated. This is because if you take something out, it has to go somewhere. These lots didn't have a minor to it, then it would just be left in a block, and there was already ownerships and stuff, so it has to go from one directly to the, the other. The proposed minor subdivision that is on your agenda later is called the Heartland subdivision. Staff would like to recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the vacation of the lots 47 through 52 of the Rusted Hills Phase 3 subdivision on to the city council. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. I gave you a copy that was of, of the letter that was written by the applicants, and the signing of both Ralph and his wife Catherine, and then Doug both signed that letter that you have printed that was at your, at your seats when you got here tonight. We neglected to put that in your packet to review. And so that just kind of shows you what I explained to you in the report was basically that they had that agreement, it was just overlooked when that time came.
Thanks, Drew. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
So Drew, I just had one question that came to mind, is, is they redo the minor subdivision. How does this affect tax ID numbers and everything else that's already been assigned to these lots from the county? And how does it affect then people's legal descriptions and all the stuff that they have for title? I mean, does it just, is, is it going to change? I'm assuming it has to change the tax ID number, or does it remain the same? Do you know?
No, it won't. You're, you're correct, because if, if you create a new subdivision, of course, that header changes, as, you know, you being a razor-aware, like a common, you know, indicator for your tax ID starts with a W, because that stands for Washington, then there's a dash. And then they have an abbreviation of the subdivision. Right now, that abbreviation probably is RH, you know, whatever it may be. And, you know, followed by another dash, and then, you know, the parcel then would be 47, because it's lot 47 of Phase 3, because they would have Phase 3 Lot Blank. Now, if this is vacated, then it becomes the Heartland, it'll have a W, and then they could either just have an HTLD or whatever the county wants to give as that kind of indicator of the subdivision. And then it would be followed by, you know, dash 1, dash 2 through 6.
Right, so what you're saying, and that was my question, so will they change all of the platinum, or platinum identifications for each of these six lots then? Will they?
Yeah, they'll have to. And then they'll be responsible to notify their, their mortgage, you know, company on that. Because that's really, or, and maybe their insurance company, but there wouldn't be too many of them, but they would have to add, notify, you know, their, those people who hold, hold title or, or loans on these particular lots.
Drew, this is Commissioner Hanson. Going back when this was first brought to the city, was, were you aware, I'm assuming you were here at the time, maybe I should clarify that, were you here at the time?
Yes.
Was it always known to you that this was, this agreement was on the table, even though it wasn't completed properly on our paperwork? Was it always known to you that those six lots were to be?
Yes. Yeah, we understood that they were going to keep them out, they came in together as co-applicants, but noting at the time of the recording that, you know, and, and basically, this happens often out there in, in the world. Again, cities aren't involved in CCNRs, the state doesn't allow us or want us, and I applaud that many times, this being one. That you can exclude lots out of CCNRs, it's done quite often. And that's what should have been here, is that should have had all the CCNRs, and then it said accepting lots 47 through 52. You know, everybody else follows these particular items.
When you pull houses out like this, is it a detriment to the, the people and the rest of the community, or anything that comes up that you've seen in your experience?
I, I think the only thing that would be, and again, you, you know how this is where you live, Commissioner Hanson and others, it could affect people's HOA fees. You know, because now all of a sudden, you're taking six lots out, but then again, whatever those fees might have been, if these six lots consume some of that, then that cost would go down. But the other people, their, you know, monthly fees might go up because these six people aren't participating in that anymore.
Yeah.
So it could, you know, it can, it can fluctuate on both sides of that. And this one I don't know about, because again, we don't get into those.
Yeah. My last question had to do with something that somebody asked me about. Will the, if the city council approves this in the future, will this, do they share the same retention pond or detention basin? Is that, is that something that needs to be added, or is it stay the same, literally just moving this to its own subdivision?
They'll, they'll, they'll have their own things, you know, on it as well, that they'll have to sign in, is, but they'll all be using, you know, the, the regional detention, which is, you know, off, off through here anyway, which is on Stady Farms land. And that's, you know, the part that Ralph put in when he was part of the development, was that Ralph gave up part of the, the farm area for a regional detention pond, that all the folks in Rusted Hills, in Roadrunner Ridge, all in that area benefit from that regional retention pond.
Drew, this is Commissioner Anderson. On that note, then, there was a, so there was a comment in the public comments that talked about this, and I I guess maybe this is a, a question better, maybe better asked if, if Ralph is here or online, but according to this comment, at least this person that wrote the comment is under the impression that, that part of their dues they're paying with Rusted Hills is to go towards a future retention basin with grass in it like a park. And I, I guess I that might, not necessarily something that we need to do, but it should probably be cleared up with these people, that if their, if their retention basin is actually a regional retention basin, and that's what they're paying with their HOA dues to upkeep, probably be a good idea for them to know that, rather than thinking they're putting money into a fund that will someday build a, a park slash retention basin. That could probably cause a lot of angry feelings in the future.
Well, I'm gonna, I know Brandon's online. Brandon, what do you know about the, that regional detention thing? Is there anything part of that that you know of?
I know that the, the city does not maintain that, that's privately maintained. So I'm gonna let the applicant, I'm gonna defer that to the applicant about how they were gonna take care of it, landscape it, and what the dues were supposed to go to. I know that we don't, we don't maintain that basin.
Okay, now I just wanted to ask, I knew you were online, so I think the family is here, commissioners, and unless you wanted to wait or have them answer that now or, or later.
Commissioner Hanson, from my time on the commission, I've enjoyed it more if I can hear from the applicant after the public hearing, so they can answer more questions at once. If they wouldn't mind making a note of what we're talking about now, that they can address that after, I would prefer that, if that's okay.
Yep. Any other questions that I can help you with?
Commissioner Anderson, another question for you, Drew. So on, on the application here, or the recommendation, I should say, it says that the proposed minor subdivision is, is currently zoned residential agricultural, one acre minimum. But on the, on this new Heartland subdivision exhibit, each of these lots are all half-acre lots. Is that a typo, or?
Not at all. If you look, and if you go across the street here, it's zoning is RA, RA1 as well. And, and I appreciate you bringing that up, I, I like that, because, you know, I have two, two commissioners on here. This is part of the bonus density program. And so this development all benefited from different things that they did for application to, to get credits for higher densities. And so especially with this particular, you know, these folks here, and these six lots, their credits probably came all from the, the giving of that land for that regional detention.
That makes sense, I, I understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, so as part of the bonus density, which all of these folks, you know, are in, that's why they have tree-lined streets, you know, on there. They did some, you know, landscape open, you can see they had this, this trail, if you, you know, across the street as part of that. The regional detention, those are just some of the things they put in and received credits for, so. So that's why they, you know, that meets that, it's part of the bonus density and the credits awarded.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff before we open this public hearing? At this time, I'll open the public hearing for item 6A. I just want to reiterate really quick, please state your name as you come to the microphone. Please be clear and relevant to the item that we're discussing here tonight, and if you can, please try to limit your comments to three minutes or less, and just don't forget to get as close as you can to the microphone, so Kathy can hear you well as she's making notes. If you'd like to come and speak.
My name is Nicholas Laffley. I reside and my family at 3262 South Bronco Drive. Our home is adjacent to the lots in question. We would definitely be adversely affected by the vacation of these lots from the subdivision. It is also my understanding through talk with my counsel that this application does not comply with Utah law. It has been claimed that the inclusion of lots 47 through 52 in the Rusted Hills Phase 3 was a mistake, that the parties did not intend for those lots to be included in the subdivision or have them bound by protective covenants. But in fact, these lots could not have been sold or have building permits issued to develop that if they had not been part of the subdivision. Further, in this case, we know that the owners of Lot 51, Callan Kaylee Goodman, obtained a burnt building permit and then a loan in October 2019. As part of that loan, they signed a rider, which specifically they agreed to be bound by the protective covenants of Rusted Hills Phase 3, and that they would abide by these covenants in construction of their home. They subsequently violated this protection by building their homes with a reflective metal roof. This roof causes unreasonable reflection of light into our home. During the brightest months of the year, the glare is so bad that we have to keep our blinds closed and avoid the backyard for multiple hours during the day. As soon as we saw the glare, when the roof was first going up, we tried to get in touch with the Goodmans to resolve the issue. They refused to work with us on the issue, and were not willing to explore the option of a corrective protective coating, which we had reached out and researched and presented to them. This issue is very important to us. It was so important that we actually offered to pay $15,000 towards the cost of a resolution. We bought into the subdivision with the understanding that all lot owners would comply with protective covenants. We had a right to rely on the validity of the county records, which indicated that the investment in the subdivision would be protected. The compliance of all lot owners ensures that everyone in the subdivision can enjoy the same benefits. It is also my understanding that in order for a subdivision or any portion to be vacated, the applicant must demonstrate that there is good cause for the vacation. This application is nothing more than an attempt to circumvent protective covenants. There is not good cause to amend the vacate, amend or vacate the plat. It is also my understanding that the protective covenants run with the land and cannot be modified except by terms established within those covenants. Most importantly, if approved, this application would establish a dangerous precedent. Property owners who are unwilling to abide by protective covenants should not be able to simply ask the city to vacate the lot in order to avoid compliance. I respectfully request the planning commission deny the application to vacate lots 47 to 52 from the Rusted Hills Phase 3 subdivision plat. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicholas. I should also note, prior to the second person coming up, as a planning commission, we did receive public comments that were submitted. We had a chance to review those prior to this meeting this evening, so some of the things that you might say we've seen or heard before, I'm happy to hear them again. Nicholas, thank you, that sounded very similar to something that we did receive, and there are some points in there that I'd like to try to get to the bottom of myself. Thank you. Whoever would like to go next?
I'm Catherine Staley, and I, I'm not really sure how to respond. Because I, you know, we, we feel badly for how it happened. And when those lots were put in, we told our children that they were not part of that subdivision, because that's what we had talked about, as Drew commented. From the very time this was all started, that it would not be a part of the other subdivision, would not be a part of those rules, because it was on our land, which is a farm, and you know, it has a, a different feel over there. So I'm not sure if you want me to answer some questions on.
Just stand by, maybe.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
I mean, I've got two others that can probably speak better than me, but I, I feel like because it is our, it is our property, and I feel badly that there's feelings that if Ralph and I had looked at the stupid paper and turned it over and read, we would have seen where it was an incorrect statement. And I have learned in the last week that one of the attorneys commented, it was probably my fault, because I just picked up the thing and copied it and sent it in, so. But, you know, you can't go backwards, and if we, if we totally could, we'd have read the same thing, but we didn't, so. It was kind of a push so that we could get further on the subdivision. I know that Doug Dennett is out of town, and, and he could verify this, of what, what took place. But, you know, I, I can have the other two comment better than I can, because I'm the one that signed it with Ralph, so.
I think you're doing great. You're doing better than me sitting up here, we can switch places.
No, thanks.
Don't go anywhere, we might have some questions.
I'm not going anywhere. Because I, I feel badly that, that these kids have built their dream home, and they feel badly that they have neighbors that are mad at them. I mean, you know, I, I just told them, no, just, you go ahead and do whatever it is you want, because we're not in, in that, and then then my daughter said, you want to see your signature on it? That was a plan.
Thank you.
I'm Sherri Tate, and I'm just, actually, I'm on the phone with Doug Dennett, and he's just asking if there is a way, a possible way that he could call in. Is there any option for that, where it's a public hearing?
I believe there is. Drew, could you clarify that?
Yeah, there is. I don't have that number. Sherri, what I'd have you do, if you can, maybe Kathy can pull that up on her computer, because I'm tied into keeping all these exhibits. There is a phone number that Doug could call in on, and they could get him on, but he needs to do it right away. So just slip over to Kathy. Kathy, can you get that number ready for Sherri, I hope? And then give that to Doug. It's on that email. You know, that, the one that we click onto for the Zoom, if you look farther down, there's a number there, Kathy, if you can bring that email up. You know, that, the one that we click onto for the Zoom, if you look farther down, there's a number there Kathy, if you can bring that email up from Steve.
We could read it over the podium.
You have it. That'd be great. Thank you.
Sherri, did you say you do have it? Did I understand that right?
I can read it to you if you want, or show it.
Oh, I thought he was listening. He's, wow, okay.
All right. The meeting ID is 848-8571-1025. Passcode is 899-820.
Mute him. You don't give that one out.
Hey, stop, stop.
Stop giving that one out. Mute him.
And we don't, that's why I wanted Sherri to go get that in the other room, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to let you know, and it's not, it's just that you could have some yo-yo somewhere, take that number and cause a lot of problems in your meeting. So that's why we don't want to put that out over like that.
Blame it on the pro temp.
No, it's okay. I'm just, you know, that's why we needed to not, not say that, just for learning purposes, so.
Okay. Sorry, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Kale Goodman and I'm the owner of lot 51, the home that's been built there with the metal roof. And there was never obviously any intention to, to cause any. I have, there is a home for the other home next to Mr. Lafferty's home with a single story home. The pitch completely blocks the view of that glare. So eventually when there is a home being built there, that glare is going to be gone for them. I did time it. I did take pictures. It is about an hour, an hour and a half out of the day that they do experience a glare during those peak months of the summer. We also are working with our attorney right now because of this matter to where Catherine has a corporation nonprofit being filed to own the HOA for the new Heartland Development. We already have CCNRs developed. We're in the phase of creating an agreement with Doug Dennett and the Rusted Hills Development to share in on the detention basin. So all those things are already in the works and, and those matters are being taken care of. She's already got the papers here if you guys need to see those. So that's all I can say about that. Thanks, Kale. Appreciate it.
You had the, the question about the hole in the ground, the basin. In, in what we'll have there, they, they, everyone that lives on those lots will pay into that basin because they're, it's set up so that their runoff will go down into that basin also. If you had any question on that. And at this time, we, nothing from the homeowners has gone into that basin yet. So as far as them paying their dues and, and us just having, you know, lawn and all of that, that's, that's not happening yet. So, but our lots will also pay into that basin because that's the way it should be.
And you'll, and you'll be responsible for continuing the maintenance of that?
No matter what. The city is not responsible for it. We are.
The six lots that you're talking about trying to pull out, have they been paying into the HOA to this point?
They haven't because we didn't know we were in the HOA. But none of that money, if it's going into someplace, it's not, not coming to us. That's what I'm trying to say is the HOA is paying us for the pond, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully Doug will call in. Sherri Tate again. I want to address the detention basin. Is that Doug?
Yeah.
Okay. No, it's okay. So on the detention basin, and I know that there is a lot of heartache over that detention basin. Believe me, there's a lot of heartache right here too with that. The intention of that was to be beautiful and it was beautiful for about six months. And what we've found is the irrigation system that was set up originally was to come from our pond. And because of the pond, there's a lot of issues with the pump fogging and things like that happening. And so on the farm, there is a well that has been there for years. And Stupi Farms, if you're familiar, they water all of their, their areas with a well. So we've had a guy there and there's only like two in Washington County that work on wells. And that is our goal is to try to get that so we can water from that well. So we don't have those issues. Our goal is to have that be beautiful. I don't want it to look like that either. But we're working really hard, but we've gone the route of, you know, doing culinary watering. And you can imagine the impact these. So, so like my mom stated, we haven't been given a dime for anything. We've paid for everything that, that's been done along with Doug. And Doug and I are working really hard together because we don't want the eyes sore either. And so if people are angry about that, all I can say is if your house floods, you'll be really happy it's there. It will help. So we're trying to be good neighbors and clean up the place, but and in regards to, to Mr. Lafferty's comment about us just trying to pull this out because we're in trouble, that is such a false statement. I can, I can testify that all of us had that same understanding. My daughter, who is Kaylee Goodman, the whole time she, she just kept building and building and, and then when the Laffertys approached them, I said, well, it's not a problem. You're not in the HOA. None of us knew they were in the HOA. Their neighbors that live right next door that have been there for three years didn't know they were in the HOA. So it was, it was an agreement from the get-go. And it's been very heartbreaking to watch everything play out and to watch my mom in tears when she realized what paper she had signed because they honestly did not know. And yeah, it's, it's a mistake that was made and it's unfortunate, but to come up and say that our goal is to just yank those lots out because of that is, is a false statement. It was never supposed to be in there. And I hope that Doug can call in and, and share that too. And I, I can tell you that if we pulled multiple city officials up here that worked on that, because that was a big deal. That detention basin was a big deal. Every one of them will say the same thing from the get-go. Our whole reason for that detention was we would put the lots as a buffer, but we, they were never to be included. And I know that, that Doug Dennett's attorney stated, he just copied what was in Rusted Hills 2, overlooking that. That is what happened and it's unfortunate. And you know what? There's great people in that neighborhood and I hope that, that fences can be mended and things can be good. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Doug Dennett. If you guys can hear me.
Hey Doug, well, give us just a second. If you don't mind. This is Commissioner. Thanks.
First point is, the mistake wasn't ours. And so for us to suffer consequences from someone else's mistake is, I don't believe is fair. Second of all, we looked into this neighborhood when we first came here. If we knew this was going to be a problem, we never would have bought this neighborhood. We had lots of other options and, and even now, this has been very disrespectful for us. Third, we were very willing to talk with him. We spent weeks trying to communicate with him just to say, please let us talk. Let's figure out a solution. We, we, my wife did hours of research and looked and found this coating that will coat the roof and, and reduce the glare. I, I saw it. And then we offered it to them. They said they'd look into it. They never did. And we told them we'd even pay for the coating. And we dropped the whole thing. They just coated their roof and we'd pay for it. But they didn't even listen to us. They, they said, call our lawyer. Basically, they said they didn't want anything to do with it. They would, they would, they wouldn't, they wanted a legal battle. And for me, sorry.
No, it's okay. Nicholas, thank you for the time. I appreciate it. Kale, it's okay. I, you probably shomped it a bit. I just want to make sure that, is there anybody else that would like to stand up that has not stood up to this point? Like add anything on this public comment? And then I'm going to come to Doug. There's also one. Oh, go ahead. I'm coming to you Doug in just a minute.
Brad.
Okay.
I am in lot 50. And the things it was, I was the first one in this, these properties. What is said, has been said already, was said to me that these lots were not part of the HOA. They were just kind of lumped into Phase 3 for this purpose of, of getting, getting the, the lots done and improved. And that they weren't not part of the HOA and that was, that was a joint communication between Ralph. And we have not been paid any. We weren't a part of the HOA, so.
Awesome.
I've been here for just, just four years now.
Thank you. Hi Kale, it's here, man. I definitely don't want to turn this into a back and forth because we can't solve any of these problems, but yeah, absolutely.
I'll be quick. So, here's the thing. Mr. Laffley owns the lot directly behind him in between us. He sold that lot now. So I feel like that the reason we built our home there and took their view away was like they were already kind of just upset with us building there to begin with. We did look into the coating. We contacted our roofer at the time that was putting the metal roof on the, on the home. It was almost done by the time that these issues arose. We obviously got tens of thousands of dollars invested into that. And he said, you know, at this point you can't change your roof. It's not weighted for a tile roof. It was weighted for a metal roof. You're talking about drywall repair. You're talking about so many hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to, to change the roof to a different product. There's multiple homes in there with pieces of metal roof material. Like the HOA has not been really like managed. There's many homes that weren't approved before they were built there and we were understanding we weren't in it. So that's why we never obviously had our plans approved there. The metal, the coating that, that Mr. Lafferty likes on our roof would, would actually void the warranty of our, of our roof. And it's not a baked on product from the factory. So over years, we're going to deal with pulling, chipping, and you know, that, that's just going to end up obviously destroying our home. And so there's obviously, there's no, nobody's going to win in this situation. And it's just, it's unfortunate. The solutions, there's other solutions. I also suggested to Mr. Laffley, like raising his, his wall or putting an extension on there that would obviously, because it's a couple few feet that would take that glare away. There's obviously, now that he sold the, the lot, a potential of a home being built there, which is going to block that as well. So, but that's just kind of the fact of the matter is nothing was intentional. We did look into those options. There's a lot of false things going on here. And our attorney, this isn't against Utah state law. It's perfectly legal for us to vacate and have our own HOA subdivision. So.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Doug, I'm almost to you. The reason I'm waiting for you to come last Doug is because as a developer, I can give you more time than the three minutes, which I plan on doing. I just want to make sure that anybody here in the chambers has a chance to ask questions that you might be willing, able to address with more time allotted to you. That's why I'm kind of holding off for a second. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak on this item? All right, Doug, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here if you can hear me.
Can hear you okay? As a developer, I know you've been listening. There's some comments and questions you might want to address. I'm not going to hold you to the three minutes, but if you could be as brief as you can, I appreciate that.
Yeah, sure. Just to give you a little history, the land was for sale through Ralph Staley. And when we purchased it, we talked about getting five acres to put in a park. And then later, they decided that because it was on, in their land and parking lot, they would rather keep it to three acres, which was the minimum for the detention pond. And they wanted to keep, keep that so that it could stay in the Staley family, that, that land. And so, you know, as a landowner, you respect what they want because they own the land. And so when we first started, that, that's how this has all started. It was for sale. We had to come up with the area detention basin. We, we were going to go with the five acre and a park, but it ended up changing to three acres, which was the minimum for the area detention basin. So everybody in that area, including other, other subdivisions, needed to drain into that pond. And there was others that were going to join in as part of the landscaping and stuff that they requested. And then they opted out later. So it kind of left us doing it all. And then we ran into like Sherri said, Sherri said, issues with the irrigation system that we're trying to figure out so we can get it restored back. So we're working on that on a separate issue. But on that one side of the road, they were going to keep that land and they were crystal clear to me that that was not going to be a part of that subdivision. And we all agreed. And somewhere along the way, there was maybe some signatures that had to get signed and none of us was aware until all of this came, came about. And it's like the one guy, I think the owner of the house said, you know, nobody reviewed the plans because we all were completely crystal clear that both six lots were out of the detention basin. In fact, Phase 1 didn't have to pay because they had their own pond at the time. And then we all understood that even both six would not pay a part of that detention. And so we added Ray DeWitt's piece, which was Phase, I want to say Phase 6, and we added his lots into it so he could be a part of that detention basin and that we would collect those fees. And so we feel like with all that we had, there was enough to maintain the, the pond over there that the city requested. And so getting back to the house, like when the roof got built and it shined in, I, I don't think anyone was aware that, you know, anything was wrong or, or until this all came about. And so we were just surprised. And when we went back to Drew and Drew stated it really well from the, the beginning. He, he understood the situation. We just all understood that that, they were out. But I think what possibly happened is in order to build, they had to belong to a subdivision. And I, I'm not sure how it went about, but I was kind of shocked to learn later that they were in the Rusted Hills because that was never the intent with the Staley's. And, and that's just being honest. That's not one, one side or the other. That's just straight down the line, honest about what happened. And they, they just, I, I think they were shocked and we were shocked that it, this all came about.
All right, Doug. I appreciate it. This time, if there's no other pub, Doug, can you stay on the phone in case we have some other questions for you?
You bet. You bet, yes.
Know the comments from the public, the people that would like to speak? I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing on item 6A.
Commissioner Moos, I'm moved that we close the public hearing for item 6A.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
First and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed on item 6A. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions for, at this time, just additional questions for staff? Drew, this Commissioner Hansen, I have one that I can think of while I was sitting here listening to this. Although, you know, we do this every other week and we see these HOA things come to us and we're very familiar with the commission and the city not getting involved with HOA issues. I kept wondering and wanted to know, what does the city do, if anything, or do they have any involvement when there are two neighboring subdivisions that an issue is created like this, where it's not the same subdivision, but it's somebody that's budding up to another one and one allows metal roofs that reflect in? Is that something in the city that we've dealt with before? Does the city not get involved with that either? Or do you have any experience?
Well, I don't, I'm trying to think of any experience and nothing's coming off the top of my head. Again, what, you know, CCNRs are specifically for the people that live within a boundary of a subdivision. Again, the states told cities are not allowed to be part of them, in the middle of them, you know, enforce them or anything like that, you know, to that nature. So, but I've never had one where we've, you know, and I, and I think people know if they went. Or anything like that, you know, to that nature. So, but I've never had one where we've, you know, and I, and I think people know if they went and talked to an attorney, he would just say, sorry, I can't help you. If they were two subdivisions that butted up to each other and one said, all the houses are going to be green, but yet the other ones, and again, I'm being a little facetious, but it, it gets to the point. But the other subdivision says, we're all red houses. That would just be, you know, what they all chose to do and, and they can't point the finger across that, that subdivision boundary line, you know, as it relates to that. They can't have other people, you know, affect, affect someone else's CCNRs if they're not part of that. If that, I hope that kind of answers the question you were asking.
So the city doesn't get involved with even something like that either. I can understand and hearing you and thinking through my own mind where that would come about in the process for us at the beginning, where we would look to try to mitigate. You know, we always talk about light at night and things like that when we're doing different projects. I can understand maybe if we're talking about a new subdivision. But the other question I had is, is there any concern for us, because it sounds like there's some kind of a legal issue going on? Is there a concern for us whether we make a decision or don't make a decision for recommendation to the council based on the legalities for the city?
Well, I'm just going to fall back on to the thing. Again, I'm not the city's legal counsel by any means. But, you know, if I look at this for just as base value, is that if we're not to be in the middle of, you know, CCNRs, HOA stuff, then that's kind of not, you know, not part of our, our venue, so to speak, or, you know, our, our court of plane, you know, our playing field, so to speak. So to have that, you know, if we're not supposed to go out into that one, then I would look at it that it, you know, really can't come into our, our thing. They, they have to fight that out legally amongst themselves. You know, it's a civil matter when it comes to this particular case. So, I mean, I get the frustration by everybody, you know, but again, I, I knew from the day before they started putting the sewer lines in, the water lines in, et cetera, back when this was being, you know, Ralph owned it and was selling it to people, you know, on the other side, on the east side of Camino Real. You know, when they came, this was kind of the discussion that these would not be. Now, again, I need to make clear, being part of a subdivision and being, being mandated by CCNRs are two different things. So there was a statement given, you know, by an attorney that you received and by someone on your public hearing. You know, yes, they were part of the subdivision to have their lots recorded at the county to be able to sell and get building permits. That's being part of a subdivision, but being, being governed by the CCNRs can be different. I, I brought that out in my discussion earlier in my report is that it is not uncommon to read CCNRs out there and, and have a line in there that says, all these things apply to every, you know, all the lots within the subdivision, excepting lots, whatever they may be. And they're not part of those CCNRs. When that CCNR, and that's what should have been on these, that was the, the hiccup of that one line. It should have excluded lots forty seven through fifty two because that was the intent from day one. And unfortunately, that was the, the mistake that, that happened in this case when they were going through the recording process, was putting the line in there excluding lots forty seven through fifty two. Because the two developers, the Staley's and Mr. Dennett, agreed that they would not be part of those CCNRs, but it was just missed at that time at the end. And that's why we're here today.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Drew?
I don't have any questions, but I think just looking at the size of the lots and the way the lots are configured, it's fairly clear that forty seven to fifty two were different than, than the other lots. Because they're, these are all half acre lots and nine to 10,000 square feet large than the other lots. So, I mean, just logic would tell you that would confirm the information that we.
Commissioner Anderson, I, I don't know if this is so much a question, just sort of thinking aloud, but. So the issue, the issues about the, the roof and so forth are obviously not relevant to, to our, our condition whatsoever. So regardless of everybody's position on that, that's not something for this, this board. That's something that would, would be a civil matter if, if, if you guys have issues with each other, that's between the two of you. As far as, I think the sticky thing, whether, you know, whether these were, were intended to be part of it or not, that the, the real hard thing to wrap, I guess, wrap my mind around is, is the idea that, that, you know, most CCNRs, if you read in them, you know, they require like, you know, a certain percentage of homeowners or whatever to agree if people want to get out of this ban or this and that. But at the same time, that's not the rules with the, with the city. It's like, you know, it kind of, it kind of puts everybody in between a rock and a hard spot where, where, you know, the, the city code is actual, is law. Whereas CCNR are not law. They're, you know, it's not, if, if you break a CCNR, you know, rules and regulations, you're not breaking law. You're breaking a restrictive, you know, covenant that's been placed on, on title. And so it's something that's, you know, if you go to buy land or whatever, that's something that, that you're buying land subject to that restriction that's put on there. And something that is enforced by the title company. It's not something that's enforced by police department or the city or anything like that. So again, it, it leaves it to where, you know, it becomes a civil matter, not, not really something to do with the city or something like that. Am I, is that correct, Drew?
Yeah, that's what, you know, we, like, like I was trying to say, we want to stay out of those civil matters between those property owners. Because again, our laws do not re, you know, prohibit metal roofs in the city. We don't have anything against that. You know, so and, and that would be my question. If this house didn't have a metal roof on it and they wanted to vacate, would the rest of the neighbors be upset about that? I mean, that, you know, to me, I, I think that's the bottom question here. And I, and I just would, you know, wonder if that were the case, would everybody even mind if they vacated out the six lots if it wasn't because of the metal roof? And that, you know, I hate to say it, but that's what it kind of teeters on. In this case, I think in, for the most part of the against to, you know, this application.
Drew, Commissioner Anderson, one, one more clarification, I guess, is so if, setting aside whether, whether it was intended to be done, you know, in the, in the CCNRs or not, I guess my, my question is, is there anything in the city code or city law that says that you can't vacate out of a, out of a subdivision?
No. Okay. Law allows, allows for vacations. That's why, you know, they, they have. In fact, you guys were quoted to, you know, two things by an attorney that wrote into you on your written comments, you know, and it states right in there that they, you know, vacating lots is a thing that happens within the state of Utah.
Drew, this Commissioner Hanson, whether or not the decision is made to pass this on to approval denial. It doesn't, I want to say it shouldn't, but I'm asking and I, I know you're not the legal counsel, but I want to voice this. It shouldn't change any merit of what's going on, not of, you know, on a civil situation, correct? It's not an endorsement from us one way or the other, is it?
No, we're just, we're processing an application of six, you know, six lots that want to vacate out of a subdivision. That's what we're looking, that's all I'm looking at this at, is that I have an application, you know, to vacate six lots. You know, out. And so that's what the application is about. And then all the other stuff is, you know, come about on that. So it's, it's like if there wasn't a, again, I go back to the theory of there wasn't a metal roof on here and I had six people come in, it would be the same process.
So Drew, this Commissioner Musso, so is this something that we recommend to the city council or is this something that we handle in planning commission?
Well, you have to recommend, the city council's the only one who can, you know, when it comes to plating, the council has to pass approvals of vacations, amendments or recording, you know, accepting of, of, you know, divided land. It has to go through the city council.
That just makes a difference in the verbiage of how you propose it.
Right. And in our, our city, that's the case, you know, for this, is that they are the, where the decision is made is through the, the council.
All right, commissioners, before I entertain a motion on this, my thought personally is, I'm very empathetic for individuals on both sides of this. My vote tonight is going to be simply based on what Drew is advising us as a commission, whether or not to allow these homes to vacate the subdivision Rusty Hills. And the way I understand the answer to the question I asked, this has no merit or endorsement one way or the other, but what's happening out there behind the scenes? I have an opinion professionally that I will not share this evening. I think that I would really like to see it get solved somehow. Because as volunteers essentially up here, we, we live in the community, we live, I live not far from this, what's happening. And I don't like to see it, obviously, and neither do the people here that are talking about it, who express that. I'm sure it's not fun in the neighborhood, people taking sides. I had it in my own neighborhood. That was a blast. So I'm trying to avoid that at all costs again. But my vote this evening goes just strictly for what we're asked to do as a planning commission, which is recommend or to deny the city council, whether or not they can legally do this and they follow the steps that the city has outlined that need to be followed. So with that, that's my comments just to commissioners and I'll entertain a motion if you don't have any other comments or questions for staff on item six A.
Commissioner Anderson. Given, given that the, the HOA issues don't pertain to this and that we're, we're looking to vacate out, which is permitted by city code, I make a motion to recommend to city council vacation the six lots out of Rusty Hills, phase three subdivision, lots forty seven through fifty two. On the condition that city council also approves the Hartman Minor subdivision.
No, let go back one, six A, item six A. It's essentially, it's going to turn into seven.
I guess. So the condition, the condition is that they have to receive a platter approval for the new subdivision.
Drew, are we good with that as a motion?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Commissioner Musso, I second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson. I have a second by Commissioner Musso. I'll go to individual voting on this item. Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Musso.
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson, I'm an aye as well. Motion passes that we recommend this to city council. And Drew, for the people here, could you tell us when this will be heard by city council?
Three weeks from tonight. So that will be the twenty fourth of March.
For those of you online and here, the twenty fourth of March, what time does that meeting start?
They start at six P M.
Six P M. Okay. Thank you. We're going to move to item seven A. This is consideration to approve a conceptual plan for the Heartland Six Minor Subdivision Final Plat located approximately three, three, four, two, south, three, three, five, eight, south, Camino Real. Applicant is Catherine Staley. Drew, I'll turn the time over to you for a staff report.
Okay, I, I apologize. I should have looked this over and just caught this. I'm probably going to ask you to table this for two weeks. Because this is not a conceptual plan, because that would only be for two lots on that. So I apologize. I, I should have caught that before. We will probably, I think, if it is requiring a public hearing, we will get those notices out right away. If not, then again, they can still come back in two weeks because it's not a consideration and I want to clarify that. That still allows me, from whatever your discussions will be in two weeks, to move that forward in one week to the city council. So I'm not losing any time here, but I just want to go back because of the heading on this. I should have caught that and fixed that, but I, so I'm going to ask that the commission table item seven A. So I can get that heading and stuff worded correctly. And if I need to get notices out this week on a public hearing, if it, I need to go back and count, you know, go back in the statute and see if a six lot requires a public hearing or not. But I know that the heading is wrong and that's why I want it tabled right now, because I don't want this to have a hiccup on anything. So I hope that explains that. I'm just asking for a tabling until the seventeenth of March.
Catherine, does that make sense to you? Drew, you're going to handle everything, correct? The applicant, there's nothing required.
You need to worry about anything. We'll take care of all that from our side. It's all about the wording and the heading all has to be appropriate.
Which you want.
It's a city procedural issue.
Yes.
And, and just to reiterate what you mentioned, so applicant could hear this, is that this will not be a loss of time for them in their process.
That is correct.
Drew, Commissioner Anderson, question. If we're tabling seven A, does that change the fact that six A, the condition that, that it has in here is that the, the, the application for a minor subdivision running concurrently with this vacation application?
No, it doesn't because it is running right now. So, you know, it's in our hands. They've made application for it. I just got to get the, the title changed on here because it's not a conceptual consideration. And so I just need to get that corrected so that, again, it's still running concurrent. I just got to get the, the header right. So as far as I'm concerned, they're running side by side because they'll both end up at the city council on the same night.
Okay, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to table item seven A on advice of staff.
This Commissioner Musso, I propose that we table item seven A on, sorry, for two weeks. As per staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Bullock, I second that.
Got a first and second from Commissioner Musso, Commissioner Bullock, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, item number seven A is tabled for two weeks. Going to go to those of you that came for that item tonight. Thank you for coming. We'll move on to item eight A. This is a commissioner use permit. Also a public hearing to consider approval for C dash twenty one dash oh one, a request for a daycare located approximately one forty three South Desert Segura Lane. Applicant is Rose Jessup. And Drew, I'll turn the time over to you for a staff report.
Okay. Let me find the best exhibit to give you as we look at this. Might be included in. Well, I'm not sure where that went. I apologize. Maybe it's in this group. Yes. No? Kathy, did those floor plans get put in here by chance?
We didn't see floor, or I'm sorry, you asking the commissioner?
I'm just asking if Kathy remembers getting the floor plans that were in the, the packet. Not that I really need them. We'll, you know, I can go by the home and I can pull it up on the aerial. I'm fine with that.
I put everything that was in the, that was presented in the back.
Exterior, we didn't see any.
Because I remember seeing some. I apologize, commissioners. I'm just going to see if it's in here. Again, I'm not overly concerned about them because they were sketches.
Was it sketches of the garage or sketches of the interior?
Garage, yes. Did you, have you seen that one? That's where the play area is going to be?
No, I haven't seen that. I just want to make sure, only for the garage, because that's all we understood it to be pertaining to.
Yes, that's, it's going to be in there and outside. So I'm not sure why mine is missing that. So anyway, let's just, we'll just move in. I'll just bring up the house and we'll, we'll get going. On this particular. Um, on this particular. Item. The applicant's request an approval of conditional use permit to operate a daycare facility. Out of her home in the residential neighborhood located at, as stated, one forty three, South Desert, Segoro Lane. The daycare will run from seven thirty A M. to six P M. Monday through Friday. The applicant's requesting the number of sixteen children. Uh, which is the maximum for in-home use by state law. And that they're requesting approval for this daycare facility. With the sixteen children requested, a second caregiver will always be required to be on premise with the applicant herself. Um, the home will be required to be inspected by the building department, fire department. And given approval from both uh, for the proposed use. The daycare will be held in the home of the. Of the designated area, the garage area, um, of this two car garage, you can see that's the. Two car garage in front of you on, on your exhibit there, and it's basically a twenty, think about a twenty two by twenty two garage that'll be dedicated. For the daycare in which the sixteen children will, will be in. Um, staffs reviewed the request, or sorry, let me get back there. Um, on that, with the area fenced off in the back of the home for outdoor recreation time. And drop off and pickup plan will need to be in place to mitigate any traffic congestion or concerns. Staff has reviewed the request and has a few concerns as relates to this particular property and the location itself. The development is in a subdivision with smaller homes. And all the surrounding land around each home is labeled as common area or limited common area. So there is no specific yard ownage, it's common and limited common area. The yard areas around these homes in this subdivision are somewhat small in size. The streets are private, making them smaller than the standard residential streets in size. This could also be problematic, especially for drop off pickup circumstances. Staff just feels the location is limited and all the areas mentioned above. Staff will make note, the, the applicant intends. On this location being a temporary location until the, until a commercial location can be built and utilized. So if the commission wants to consider a temporary or a time limited approval, that is something that could be considered, that staff wouldn't have as. As much an issue with. Therefore, staff has no recommendation for the planning commission due to the concerns at the, this particular spot. The planning commission wishes to do some sort of an approval of C dash twenty one dash zero one, allowing for daycare facility. Uh, it could be based on the following findings and subject to the conditions, so. I left you some of those that you could use on. Uh, other ones that we have used on previous daycare approvals. Um, throughout the city. And so I'll let you contemplate or ask the questions as you see. Uh, that you would like to, um, let me just kind of go through. Nope, heading the wrong direction. Wanted to just get you that backyard area. Now, this is area that they're currently under construction on. To put in place out there for the play area. Along the back of the house. Um, I'll also, let's see. Now here's the menus that they're going to use, again, these are all part of their state licensing requirements they have to turn in. Uh, to be a licensed. And again, if you have more than four kids, you have to be licensed by the state. And that's why we always have, you know, one of the conditions is that they always get us a copy of that state of Utah. A daycare facility license, but they have to turn in things like this, the menus. Uh, they have to turn in a plan. And here's kind of that layout of what they'll be doing each day. Which is in your, your packet and talks about the outdoor, things that they'll be doing. Again, these are all part of those requirements for the state of Utah. Uh, care facility licensing. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that, that you have on this particular item.
Commissioners, the public hearing, before we open that, do you have any questions for Drew? Or any other of the staff might be able to help you?
Drew, this is Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Um. So question, you said that all of the surrounding. Uh, lands surrounding the house was either common or limited common?
Yes.
Um. From the pictures here on the house. It appears like they've got block walls. You know, separating off individual backyards, is that? Is that, I guess, allowed as limited common, but it's still a private backyard, like for their exclusive use?
Yeah, you can in common areas, you know, collectively as an HOA decide that you're going to. You know, put walls up to, to give a little bit there again, but it's, when it's in common area, limited just means that you have specific use to that. Um, you know, unlimited common, so they'll usually put a driveway in as limited common. And sometimes certain areas like patios in the backyard. Um, you know, can be under limited, limited common area as well.
Right, no, I, I understand that, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm. I'm assuming that since we see block walls in these pictures, that they're able to have. Private backyards with their limited common, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Drew, this. More updated aerial of this area, but this is. Kind of the most current that, you know, would have showed some of the homes, because this area is being developed rather quickly. If you've driven by.
Drew, this Commissioner Hanson, you mentioned this and I read this, I just want to make sure I understand it correctly, the streets in here are private and there's no parking on these streets.
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, if there's no other questions for staff at this time. I will open. Public meeting on item seven A, is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? I'm sorry, Aiden. Correct, thank you. I'm not sure if that's on, Rose, you say that again, your name? Kathy, you probably can't hear that, can you?
I wonder if our batteries died, do you want to, is the green light on, Eldon, or not? No green light?
Battery's dead.
Okay, let me, let me come in, uh, just give me a few minutes, commissioners, I'll come in and get the batteries.
Sorry, Rose, you're going to have to make the walk of shame the second time, we'll get it all figured out. Contrary to what we might think, one time we're here till like nine o'clock, maybe nine thirty at night, so I know that that. Usually works, but maybe blew it up on the last item, that might have happened. All right, everybody, I introduce Rose Jessup to you, go ahead, Rose.
Um, we did submit. New picture, the yard is clear finished and we have. So we have the childcare. Come in and inspect the home. And they did, uh, all the measurements for the home. The whole bottom floor is going to be used to care for the kids. Um, the garage is like for extra activities like painting. Sand. Um, the backyard's clear fenced in and finished. Um, my sister doing that with me. So there's going to be two of us at all times. We've had the fire department come in and do an inspection. And the health. Like for food inspection. Um.
I have a question for you, after you're finished with your comments, while you're there, I want to ask. When the fire department came, thank you for supplying everything that you did to us, that helps us tremendously, and the fire department came. What was the discussion like as far as no parking allowed on the street? I would assume when people are dropping off their kids, they'll be parking at some point somewhere.
Uh, yes, so they just come. We have a map.
I saw the map where it comes and goes.
Yes, so they'll come in and park right in front of my. House, um, drop their kid off, we have an app. That they can check them in real quick. And then pull back out, so it's a really fast procedure. Drop off and pick up.
Thank you.
Ms, Ms. Jessup, don't walk away. So I think we all have a couple of questions probably. Um. So in that picture that we're seeing there, you say it's, it's all finished off, is it just, give me an idea, is it grass, part of it cement? I mean, when we saw the pictures initially, it looked like there was going to be patio areas and probably grass areas, that?
So. The. Uh, email we sent had all these finished pictures in. Kathy has them. And um, we have them here too, if you want to see them, but yes, it's um, artificial turf. Patios.
Okay. And then you mentioned that you're going to use the entire bottom floor of the house for the daycare.
And that was all inspected in all those inspections.
Because, because the way I read it initially, it sounded like you just had the garage.
No.
I was going, where's, where's a bathroom and those kinds of things?
A toddler's room.
See, we, we start making comments and then Drew's. Right there, giving us what we need.
Okay. Okay, Drew, what you just gave is, is part of the application, then it will be?
Okay. Okay, and then the other question that I had was. As I read this, we have sixteen kids. And you have four and your sister have four. How does that play in, and I'm just asking this, I don't understand how the state looks at it. I mean, what if your four kids are there and her four kids are there at the same time? So does that limit you down to eight, or does it exempt out your four because they're your own, I, I, I don't know how that works?
So they count as um, in each group, so my kids are ten and older. Um, hers, she has one five year old and then hers are older, so we counted the five, the five year old with our sixteen.
Okay.
Um, but the others.
They don't count because they're not there during school hours, is that how it works? What happens during the summertime?
Um, like my oldest works, um. And the others will be in different areas and they're not counted as, like they can help us.
But they're not counted as part of?
They're not counted as part of the number, they, they measure all the like areas that we have and that's how they determine how many kids. Can be in one place.
Okay, we're obviously not, none of us up here proficient in daycare. Rules and regulations, and that's just a question I had, because. You know, that would make a difference in how many actually could take care of, obviously.
Yes, they ask all these questions when they're giving us our, like when they go through with the childcare.
I'm sure that's, application, it's a nightmare.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Rose, Commissioner Anderson. So you said that you have the backyard finished?
Yes.
Do you, have you replaced the chain link fence with the block fence that says, is, I guess it says future block fence?
Not yet.
So it's still a chain link fence?
Yes.
And then the rest of it in the back is all?
One side is block fence, the other side is the temporary chain link.
And then you have, you said you have. Uh, artificial turf and then?
Concrete.
Concrete.
Mm-hmm. And there's a little planter box, you know, around the back of bush.
Do you have? And again, we're not the health department, so it's not necessarily a condition, should have thought. Was artificial turf? Have, have you given any thought at all to the temperatures with artificial turf and little, little kids? Cause they often can get like twenty degrees hotter than the outside temperature. And you could really cook a baby pretty bad on that.
Uh, yes, that was brought up and we have sprinklers to pull that off the summer.
Is the block, block wall, will it be finished prior to the occupancy or when you start accepting children?
Um. It's kind of out of my.
Royce Jessup, I'm uh, actually part of the HOA and I represent the developer as well. Um, as, as the home, what this is, it's a zero lot line, so as the home gets built next to it. Soon as that home is complete, then the wall will go in. Right now, it's just temporary chain fence until, until the home is built next to it.
Is it under construction now?
Yes.
And do you have like an estimated, estimated date by chance?
Would say July.
July. And Rose, what month are you intending on trying to start this? Just shout, I'll tell Kathy.
Today. Possible. Just as soon as possible.
Do you currently do this now, Rose, like something that's actively, or I'm sorry, previously, previous to this home, were you doing a daycare?
Um. Yes, but just to the four kids before you need license.
Yeah, sixteen seemed crazy to me, but you know what you're doing, I guess.
We've been researching this for a long time.
Do you?
James Jessup, her brother. Ask her if she's previously done a, um, she comes from a family of about thirty two. And these two are the older sisters.
You got this ladies.
So. This is a walk in the park for these guys. Uh, Rose was shaking her boots before she come up. Tell her she was a whole lot more calm and collected than my first time ever approaching you guys, you guys do an awesome job.
You got to get that family to build the rock wall, that's what we need, or the, the block, block wall, sorry.
So, Rose, another question. Sorry, you might as well just stay there for a few minutes. Um. Do you have eyes on someplace where you're going to expand out to?
Yes, um, we've talked to several. Um. Different builders and it's all in the making, but, so we don't have our thumb on the exact spot, but it's.
So it is, it is?
It is.
Feel free.
James Jessup again, we have two other properties that we're looking at putting this on. Um, and I, I think it'd be an eighteen month process to get that building put up. And, and operational, so that's why we're asking maybe an eighteen month to get the business started, get these guys going on their feet where they can. Transition into that, maybe with a little bit of a. Little bit of a momentum under their feet before they get into overhead costs like that.
Commissioners, you have any other questions for Rose? If not, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this Commissioner Bullock, when they come out and did your inspection. The health department, I'm assuming one of them, did they have any concern with not having a block wall? Yep.
Nobody had a problem with that, we have three different inspections.
That's, that's what I was curious about.
I guess, nobody had a problem.
Awesome, thanks Rose, and this is a public hearing, there may be others in the audience that wanted to speak, if they do, please come forward at this time. And if not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. And if not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
This Commissioner Muso, I recommend that we close the, make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Commissioner Anderson, I said.
Got it first by Muso and the second by Anderson to close the public hearing on item eight A, all in favor.
I.
I, and you oppose? Okay, the public hearing is closed on item eight A. Are there any questions, commissioners or staff? Or the applicant at this time? Any additional questions? And if not, if there are not, I'll entertain a motion, but there may be, so I'll give a second to that.
I think the staff's recommendation that that we do it for a limited time is reasonable. You know, um, given the way things are now, I know Mr. Jessup said we probably need eighteen months. I would, I would propose twenty-four. Just because you can't get anything done right now, you know, the way construction is, so it seems. I know, I'm trying to put an addition on my own house, so I understand that.
In thinking through this, commissioners, as I read it, and listened to the applicant and think my way through it, there's some things I don't like about it, sure. I don't like you can't park on the street. I know that there's a traffic pattern and there's an expectation of what will happen. It just opens up for some issues. The chain link fence, talked about that, I didn't necessarily like that. It's not enough for me to say that I'm not in favor of this project. Uh, I agree with our staff recommendation as well that we look at this as like a conditional use permit applica- or application for a period of time. If this was for a permanent, I think I would have more questions and be very concerned where I might not go a certain way based on that, just on traffic alone. It worries me. Uh, if I was a resident, somebody across the street had cars coming, there'd be just, there'd just be opportunity for some. So Drew, could you, just for me, I guess, and the other commissioners, I'm assuming they might wanna know this. What does the timeframe look like? Is it something that you would recommend to us to consider? Or is it something we come up with, knowing that they've discussed that they might take eighteen to twenty-four months to find and build another location?
I'll leave that with you, just just for, you know, especially some of you know that the whole family that you're looking at there, they're all in construction. So Brian, or Commissioner Muso, don't worry about them finding people to get the work done. They're they're good at what they do. They all do different trades. And so they can handle that part of it, uh, just for your information on that. But again, I'm I'm fine if you give it a limited one. Again, I just have, I just wouldn't wanna see this thing going, you know, um, as a permanent thing in this neighborhood, that many kids on private streets, this small lot, et cetera. So, um, I think you could ask them, you know, what they, you know, look at whatever, you know, I could say if uh, they were offered eighteen, if they feel comfortable with that, probably just fine.
So this is Commissioner Muso again, um, Mr. Jessup, first Mr. Jessup. Yeah, cuz you're the one, you're the one who said you're the developer, correct, of the subdivision? Here's another question I just had pop up into my mind. How far along, how many houses do you have in the subdivision that are built?
Uh, built right now, we've got about, let's say, five eights, two, three quarters of that.
Okay, so you still have quite a bit of, well, you still have a bunch of construction going on. Is there, is there any safety concern from, I'm not worried about the kids getting out, but about when they, when the people bring cars in, because if it's a private street, you know, I I go to enough construction lots every day that I know when guys park their trucks and it gets fairly tight, is that gonna be an issue because of the width of the road?
That's a good question. So uh, we're constantly monitoring it uh, throughout the day. We've got our supervisors on site monitoring it. Also, how the subdivision works right now is there's no parking on one side of the street. Where where the, cuz we're required to have two lanes open at all times, so cars can go through. So you can park on one side for a limited amount of time. I think that's uh, twenty-four hours without notice to the HOA.
So is the house across the street, let's say directly across the street and one up either side? Are those houses done? Are they built?
All on one side, yes. On her side of the road.
Okay, okay. I'm more concerned about the opposite side of the street, directly across the street from from her house. Is that house built out?
Yes.
And how about the neighbors on either side of that house? Okay, so you're not gonna have construction traffic within a fairly good distance of of Mrs. Jessup's home, correct?
That's correct. The only construction that uh, is right next to her home is is right next to it. It's being finished.
Right.
So that is the only home in construction next to ours.
Okay.
Is that, and it's on the same side of the road?
Right, right. I'm just trying to picture in my mind when when people come in to drop off their children. Are they gonna have to drive around thirteen different construction trucks?
Right.
To drop off their kid and is it's their concern that, anything like that? And that's that's my question, basically.
I I would, it's a great question. I would say that uh, you know, with with the construction traffic being on one side and isolated in the area, as long as that's being monitored, I don't see an issue with it.
Is it, is the, is the parking allowed on the opposite side or on the same side as as Jessup's home?
Parking is allowed on the opposite side. So and and as a developer, if we need to, we also have the luxury to switch the parking on which side? If you guys would prefer to see it on one side.
I just, I'm, knowing how fast things are building out, I'm just concerned, right, you know, the immediacy of it, basically. Thank you.
Hey, James, Royce, sorry, Commissioner Bullock. My only concern is the block wall and how soon that will be built. Is there any way you can expedite that being built? I know you said once the house is done, is there any way to expedite that so that that will help med- mitigate the the construction with the kids on the, in that area?
Right, um, there is a way, um, as as long as we get stucco up that block wall. Um, as soon as stucco goes in, then that block wall can go up. And we intend to do that. She's asked us to do that as the developer. So that is our intention, is to get the block wall up as quickly as possible.
And what are you, are you still thinking July before that'll happen?
I would say early July.
There's no way you can go faster?
You know, if we did wanna do what James is suggesting, which is get ground caught up, we could probably expedite that a month earlier in June. As as it is now, um, it's a temporary chain fence, but the chain fence is is got privacy, pool privacy covering it. So, you know, as as Rose stated, the safety and health code came, looked at it, had no issues with that. Also, it's a safe di- distance from the construction. So I I I, in looking at it, it allows good privacy and safety as it is. But it would be ideal to get the block wall in as as quickly as possible.
This is Commissioner Anderson, I'll ask you some more, so you can stay in the hot seat. So, so you said it's a zero lot line. How how far, how how much room is there behind, between homes? How many feet?
Between these two homes, it's, there's twelve feet.
So, so if you put the block wall in, you'd have six feet. That, is that, I'm I'm assuming that's your concern, or five feet or whatever? From the wall to the house? So, okay, so there's twenty-four feet between houses then?
No, uh, so, so because it's zero lot line, there is no fences coming down the middle. The houses separate the property lines. Does that make sense? And then the block walls uh, come along the back and return into the back of the house.
Okay, so there's not gonna be one, I got you. So it's going to the back corner of the house?
Yes, each yard is an L, if that makes sense.
Okay, now I see.
Side yard and backyard.
That makes more sense. Yeah, I couldn't figure out why you couldn't put the wall in before stucco.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are your stucco guys that sloppy or what?
Yeah. Yeah, I build homes for a living, so I would like try and scratch my head. I'm like, why in the world can't you do a wall center?
Yes, this zero lot line is a newer product. What we're seeing is actually ninety-nine percent positivity from, from our customers. And as developers even, uh, we've we've had some challenges as far as like uh, more along education lines of educating people what uh, what the use is and where the property lines are. Where it's stated limited common, it is limited common, but it's also fenced off and intended for that problem.
So just, and this isn't regarding the, and I shouldn't even probably ask this, but but on your zero, on your zero lot line, do you, is it additional parking next to the garage where you're doing it? Uh, yes, actually. So it's concrete, extra concrete for the, for basically like a third car or whatever?
That's right. Uh, we we, we did that so that we could have plenty of parking and keep cars off the street. There are two car garages plus two cars in the driveway plus a third, and that would either be gravel or concrete.
Hey commissioners, can I jump in here real quick?
Yes.
Um, the term keeps being brought up, zero property lines. That's, that's not the case here. And I'm not trying to split hairs, but you know, when you have common area, limited common area, you don't have zero property lines. Um, I don't want this to be misled by by you gentlemen in thinking, you know, there there is no, you know, the homes are required, they're they're given their pads, they had to keep a minimum distance between each other, uh, you know, because it's his own P U D. Uh, they had to be so far off of the border back here. Um, they had to be so far off of the border up front. Uh, so there there, it's not, it's not about zero property lines. All the area around the homes are common or limited common. And I don't want you to, and again, that's different than zero yard setbacks. Okay, just so you're aware of that. Um, I kinda have concerns, I'll have to look into this of, you know, blocking off areas and stuff. I'm gonna have to really look into that. Not for per se this application, for everything they're doing in this subdivision. You know, I'm fine with the kids being, you know, confined in with some means among this. But again, I didn't want this to go down the wrong path about um, property lines, this and that, because the only property that I, they have is this pad that they own. You know, that's what I did in red. That's their only ownership outright, is that area. And it's supposed to be maintained a distance between the next one and then, you know, down the sides and so far off the front and the back. Just wanted to clarify that for you commissioners.
Commissioner Anderson, another question for you. So in the front then, so if the the back of the house is where the block wall is tying into, right? So the back right corner of the house going back to the wall. So where is the gate? Is, are you putting a gate between the the front of each house and then basically tying into each of each house?
Yes, that's correct. So it sits about eight feet back from the front of the houses. There's a gate uh, that that is gated off between the two houses.
And what, so what phase are you in right now with the house? Which, the one that's being built?
Uh, right now, it's uh, framing. It'll start framing um, probably next week.
So you just, you have a slab port right now? Okay.
And and thank you Drew for clarifying those. Uh, I didn't do a very good job of explaining the limited common, but uh, all the homeowners are under that same impression that they own the the house pad. And that in CCNRs, everything is is stated what they can use the ground around for. So it's not necessarily property lines.
Drew, this is Commissioner Hanson, just with a clarifying question about if we were given an approval for a conditional for a amount of timeframe. Um, I know I kind of asked that question a second ago. The timeframe can be determined by us. But isn't, I just wanna make sure in my mind, the whole reason why we would come up with a timeframe this would be approved for is if there are any problems, we could get them fixed before this continued.
True, well, that would be one option in this case, yes. That you could, you know, why you could. Generally, I don't like to put time limits on conditional use permits. But I could say just because of my concerns with, and you don't have to. I mean, you're the commission, you have the right to do it, but I'm just as your staff recommending that if you felt you wanted to help them out, that I would definitely do it under temporary. You could make it good, but it stays with the property. And I just hope you know that. Um, you know, with that, so that's just my concern because again, just the location and everything um, is what I've, you know, like I stated to you earlier, is my biggest concern, so.
Thanks. So for commissioners for myself, um, I don't wanna stop them from doing what they're trying to do, there's things I just don't like about it. So I I do feel like we should have some kind of a, a time limit on it that will allow us to revisit this. Um, trying to protect the surrounding neighbors if this blows up in our favor, if it blows up and it's worst case scenario, it's just this horrible traffic. We can't imagine that's the case, but if it is, it allows us a chance to come back and try to fix it before this becomes something that's permanent. That's kinda, I absolutely love the idea. Good for you guys for wanting to do it. But in trying to, I I'd like the neighborhood, I'm familiar with it. I remember when we first approved it, it came to us. I've driven through it several times. I wish you well. I just, I I, for me, I wanna find some sort of a a fix-it opportunity if it becomes an issue we're not thinking of right now, which is there is potential. In my opinion. That's where I'm at.
Um, Commissioner Anderson, I have another question for one of the two of you. Either James Royce, either one. So this, this fence, this chain link fence that's here, so how far away from from Rose's house is it right now?
Right now, it's what is it, five to seven feet away off of the edge and then.
You're about five feet from the slab of the house under construction?
Right. And you keep that safe distance. Between that, it'll come right off the back of the house. Um, would be our intention on that.
So, commissioners, I guess, let me give you my thought on this. So I I build homes for a living, and so I'm real aware of what we do here. And I also have a four-year-old that's in daycare. And I have a real hard time imagining my four-year-old um, with this fence and the the construction. So that's my big heart. But I I, I personally don't have any issues with the parking with the two-year uh, conditional permit or any of that stuff. I just, this, the wall is what's really got. Um, my, my four-year-old will be over that wall in about two minutes and he'd be on your track, go down the street. So, um, with that said, I I think I think at a, at a minimum, I I mean, I can understand, well, we can't build a wall now, that makes sense. But I think at a minimum, this the chain link temporary fencing needs to be moved to the back edge of the wall and made you know, as as sturdy and as permanent as possible. And even, like like you said, put up, you know, the privacy screening and everything and try to keep, try to keep the daycare completely, you know, as separate from the construction activity as possible. I just know I I personally would not want my, my four-year-old um, being able to get out of that and and he'd be all over the construction site. So, and and I've had my son with me on construction site and turn around and he's taking off down the road, you know, running across the street and scared me to death, so. You know, that that's my concern is just the proximity to construction and so forth.
Let me ask, so Corey, are you recommending, so the picture of the house, the front of the house right now, so are you saying move the chain link fence, the temporary fence right now to be parallel with the wall, parallel with the wall of the house with the garage, meaning?
Yes, yeah. So the back, the back left corner of the house, which is what they said they were gonna do once it gets under framing. So I would move that to the back corner of that house, you know, secure it, fasten it, whatever you have to do to make sure it doesn't blow over, you know, with wind or kids climbing it or whatever. Make sure you don't get construction grade blowing in there. And make it as, as permanent as you can given the situation. I would say at a minimum for sure.
It'd go right over that cement pad that's now there, correct?
Yeah.
I think that's reasonable.
Sorry Kathy, I was just asking if that fence would then go over the cement pad that's currently. Sorry Kathy, I was just asking if that fence would then go over the cement pad that's currently poured that we don't see in our pictures.
Yeah, and I was pointing, I apologize Drew and Kathy both, because I was pointing to get something you obviously couldn't see.
There we go, Drew Drew and his pen have got it. You are on your game, Drew.
And that would be just a temporary measure until the other house is built and the walls put up.
I think that'd make your your construction of that house a whole lot easier too.
Any other comments from the commissioners or questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion from one of you. Kathy, did I close the public hearing? No, we did. I'm sorry, I have the notes here, uh, first by. Sorry, right in front of me. Right next to the note where you told me that the correction is printed in front of me Kathy, thanks. Um, at this time, I'll entertain a motion from the commissioners, one of the commissioners, item eight A. Maybe we should discuss this a little bit more, because I'm not sure about something. I, from the commissioners, I'd like to put. And I'm open to any time, any time amount on this if this is being approved, but I want to have some sort of a. An opportunity to revisit this if there are issues that come up that we're not thinking about or even that we are thinking about. We have a chance to address um at another time in the future prior to continuing. The operation of permit. And I don't, I'm open to whatever timeframe. I don't want to stop them from doing it and I want it to be realistic, but I don't want it to be permanent. Say that again? This one is going to go to city council.
No.
Oh, it's not. It's a conditional. It's not, it's gonna be decided for us.
We would be very open to revisiting that at any time that you guys feel you would want to. Uh, just to check in and see how it's going and yeah, see how the progress on the new location has come along as well.
Rose, what do you think? I'm gonna ask you, what is your opinion on timeframe that you think? Do you understand what I'm trying to do? I don't want to impede you from doing this or stop you personally.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yes, sir.
Um. If if we went six months till they got the block wall done and then revisited it and then extended it another eighteen months. That would give it two years. Is that something we can do?
Drew, is that, did you hear that?
Yes, and yes.
Rose, did you hear that? Is that something that you guys would be okay with? In six months, we can revisit the use permit?
Make sure that we have our.
Sure everything's good to go.
Walls, make sure that the walls are there and and that insane June, but I mean, we all know. I'll probably have it done by May, but still.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Six months. And then and then from that point, we can go extend it the other eighteen months, which gives them twenty four.
Uh, that settles my issue all along, so yeah, absolutely.
And I think that's good, but after, but I would also recommend that soon as the block wall is up and functioning. That they can then expand out, they can get rid of the the chain link fence and expand into the yard.
Well, the block wall ends.
Drew, does that mean that they have to come back before the commission in six months?
Yes, if you put that on there, you'll definitely want to do that.
Okay. All right, commissioners, uh, after that discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, this Commissioner Musso, I'll screw this up really well, but. I recommend the the application requesting a conditional use permit. To operate a daycare facility uh at the residence of one forty three South Desert Segal Lane be approved. Um, with the daycare running from seven thirty A M to six P M Monday through Friday. Um, with the that the application be approved for sixteen children. As maximum for the in-house use is approved by the facility. With the two conditions, well, with the standard eight conditions and then two more conditions. One being that the temporary fence be. Parallel or to the home the way it is now, going back to the block wall. Along along the side of the house be going back to the block wall, that the temporary fence be moved at that point. And that after the block wall is fully constructed, that this temporary fence can be removed. And that we do this for a period of six months, allowing that to proceed. At such time, then we would readdress the conditional use permit. To extend out for an additional eighteen months after that.
With the additional uh addition of the the gate as well as block wall.
The gate, the block wall be finished within the six month period.
Okay, I have a first by Musso, I just need a second.
Commissioner Bullock, second.
Commissioner Bullock with the second, we'll go to individual voting, Commissioner Musso, I, Commissioner Bullock.
I.
Commissioner Anderson.
I.
Commissioner Hanson, I'm an I as well, motion passes unanimously, Rose, good luck, family, good luck. I will see you in six months with no problems and it's all good, man. Drew, do they need to, can you tell them the process or educate them, maybe maybe not tonight, but at some point, what they need to go through from here to come back in six months?
Yeah, well, we we can talk that over when we write up the thing for them. And we'll just set a date, put it on the calendar.
Okay, thanks, good luck. I know we've been here for a little while. I just want to ask the commissioners if they need a break before you do, okay, you're good? Short break. Uh, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting for five minutes for a quick break with the commissioners and any of the people in the in the call.
Okay, all the commissioners are back. Drew and Kathy, do we have communications correct? Are you, can you hear us?
I am here. Drew is almost in his office.
Okay.
What was your question, Commissioner?
Making sure you're ready, Drew.
I'm good to go. Thank you.
All right, at this time, welcome everybody back. We're gonna go to item nine A. This is a preliminary plat in a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the city council for the Finley Farm preliminary plat located approximately three hundred east, forty-three hundred south. Applicant is Cardiff Wells, LC. Is it LLC? Anyway, it says LC. Drew, I'll turn the time over to you for a staff report.
Thank you. The applicant has stated request and approval preliminary plat Finley Farms. The applicant is proposing one hundred and seventy-five lots and the area of coverage is sixty-four point eight-six acres. The zoning at this particular designation is actually splits two different zoning districts. It's the single-family residential ten thousand square foot minimum and which we would call the R-one-ten zoning district. And then the single-family residential eight thousand square foot minimum or the R-one-eight zoning district. The surrounding zoning is R-one-eight to the north, Ag-twenty, which is agricultural twenty acre to the east, residential agricultural one acre minimum to the west, and Stukey Farms PCD, Planned Community Development to the south. These parcels were recently rezoned into the R-one-eight and R-one-ten zoning designations. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances at this particular spot. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Therefore, staff would like to recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Finley Farm subdivision onto the city council based on the findings and subject to the conditions in your report. And the twelve conditions are the standard conditions that we have for any preliminary plat. No extras have been added on this particular item. I'll be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners might have. As you, if you've zoomed in, you'll notice the lots are all above ten thousand square feet. So I'm not worried about where they're located in relationship. They've just done everything in phasing, as you can see here, with that black dotted line, and that'll be the phases as this project comes in.
At what phase do they tee in the Washington Fields Road?
That will come at a future date at Washington Fields Road. You can see all the phases here in the colored area. And then what's left is they'll still come back to you, gentlemen, with a PUD in this white area. Sorry, let me get my drawing pencil. Because here's the road you can see done in blue. There's still a piece of land here that I'm gonna outline in red that's gonna come in at a future zoning application for a PUD.
So it will be some time then before that road is built?
Correct.
Drew, I don't think you guys, we actually, this is Adam Allen, American Mind Consulting. We actually are gonna put in twenty-seven feet of asphalt from away and tie it on the first base.
Sorry, you're breaking up, Adam. Could you say that?
We're gonna tie that in in the first phase. We're gonna put in twenty-seven feet of asphalt and tie that in in the first phase. When we went through the traffic study and things like that with Public Works, that's what we came to.
Okay, so that's what the blue represents then is a kind of a surface that you're gonna put in up here on this, this Weatherby Way?
Yes.
Okay. So commissioners, let me just highlight that area. They're stating they're gonna be building this as part of.
Yeah, Adam, thanks. Drew, one of the only questions I had was, this is a little bit down the road, I understand that, but in phase six, are they gonna be cutting into that hillside? Or is it gonna run along on the base? Here comes Adam again, he may ask.
Let Adam answer that. I think it's at the toe, but go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, Adam Allen again here. So there's a point over there where it comes down and it's steep and then it kind of benches out. And so we are cutting into that bench some, but not, there is a hillside designated area where we're not gonna cut into or touch at all.
Okay. At some point, I think you guys might have talked about that going up on that hill. That was raised for my question. We talked a little bit about, not a whole bunch, but some, where they were gonna be above the rest.
Yeah, and they are a little bit higher than the other ones. I mean, there's a lot of constraints right there, obviously, but no, we're not going up that hill. And before, we had them going up the hill for drainage issues, just kind of a can't cross drainage between the two different, right, one owner here, one owner there. And so maybe we've got all that resolved though.
That was the basis for the question. Thanks, Adam.
Now, Adam, is that a retaining wall right here I see against the toe?
So that's a rock, yes, it's a retaining wall with a rock fall hazard deal in there because they're so, yeah.
I just wanted to get that clarified. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or the applicant? Oh, actually, let me back it up. Did I open the public hearing? Question, do you have any questions for staff at this time before we open?
So this Commissioner Musso, where's phase, I mean, I see one B, where is, oh, one A is all the way over there. Okay, I'm sorry. It's just a little.
All right, commissioners, at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing for item nine A. Is there anybody here that would like to stand and speak? I look for a motion to close the public hearing. It doesn't look like there's anyone here on this side.
So moved, Musso.
I guess, Drew, can I just say all in favor, I, I don't wanna mess up the rules or anything, but if somebody says so moved, can I just?
This case, I'm fine if all of you are unanimous on it, because we know there's the four of you. That's probably okay, right, you know, on this one.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. So moved, I got it, all in favor. In the opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed for nine A. Sorry, commissioners.
Take a second, please.
That wasn't procedurally correct, Kathy?
Who did the second on that?
We kind of went right past it.
Hey, let's back up.
Hey, Commissioner Bullock?
Commissioner Bullock, second.
Thank you.
Kathy's keeping me honest. That's good. Kathy, do you have everything you need from us?
Yes, I'm good to go.
Sorry about that. So the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, at this time, I'll open up for some time for questions that you might have.
I have a quick question. So in looking at this, so this Crimson Cliffs Drive is what goes parallel to the high school?
Yes.
And then that turns down and goes over to St. George?
Yes.
And then, so the Blue Fields Lane, is that your access point then into the subdivision essentially? Plus then the other road that goes up to the Washington Fields?
Yeah, so Blue Fields Lane, so in Crimson, that road that's kind of in between Medallion?
Medallion, it doesn't go all the way through?
It doesn't, yeah, it will, right? There's another subdivision that's going in.
Okay.
But all of our utilities, technically, there's, there's a weird jog in Washington City right there. So all of our utilities had to come from Crimson, Crimson Cliffs. So we had to cross and go over there and get the utilities and bring them in.
Okay. So hence, that's why you have the phase one, those just little bitty lots.
Bring that road and those things over and then, and then get into the other phases there.
That makes sense. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, if there's no other questions on item nine A, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Anderson, I make a motion to recommend the approval of the preliminary plat for the Finley Farm subdivision to the city council subject to the twelve general conditions.
Commissioner Musso, I second that.
I have a first by Commissioner Anderson, I have a second by Commissioner Musso for individual voting. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson, I'm an a as well. Item nine A passes unanimously, moves on to city council. Item nine B. Thanks, gentlemen. Item nine B, this item was tabled from February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. It's a continuation of the public hearing to review only the conditions made at the February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. One, that a secondary access to meet fire code, and if the access can go through a flood plain. Second, that the HOA in Coral Canyon is not part of Coral Canyon. Three, that twenty-five foot height is followed. Four, that the issue with extra trash be dealt with. Those are the four conditions that were previously put on this item, why it was tabled. This is considered to make a recommend, this is consideration to make a recommendation to city council for the island at Coral Canyon located approximately thirty-three hundred east, eleven hundred north. The applicant is Cole West. Drew, I'll turn the time over to you for staff report.
Okay, as stated, I just give you my first paragraph there. The item was tabled on the seventeenth. Asked to go back, meet with the fire chief, which they did, and come up with a solution on the emergency secondary access to the proposed development. After those discussions, the applicant is going to use the exception in the fire code to have fire sprinkling systems installed in each of the dwelling units, thus removing the requirement for the fires' secondary access at this point. Secondary access will come at a future date when the remaining portion of land within Area Seven is developed. So that was the thing, and just to, I don't know if you guys received, looks, I hope this was passed on to you about the four items. Condition one, the secondary access, again, explained with the fire department. They will have the units sprinkled, which eliminates that for the fires' requirement on secondary. Again, there's still, the subdivision has a secondary access requirement, but this is the one for the fire departments. Condition two, HOA not part of the Coral Canyon. And again, as I stated, it will not be part of that HOA. They'll have their own homeowners association within this Area Seven B. When, so it will not reflect anything upon the main Coral Canyon's HOA, the master HOA. Condition three, the twenty-five foot, they're committed to doing that, so we can add that actually as a condition if you feel to move it forward, that the buildings will be limited to twenty-five feet. Condition four, the trash will be dealt with accordingly, and their answer on that, we've outlined areas on the preliminary plat for the large dumpsters to be placed within the subdivision. We'll kind of zoom down there. And you can see they've put a dumpster right here. Let me grab my pencil. Looks like we have one there. Trying to think if I saw another one on there.
Keep going east, Drew. Just right of your arrow, right there, right at the Hammerhead parking lot.
Oh, right here, okay. I thought I'd saw one, I just couldn't remember where it went. So these are gonna have dumpsters in, in enclosures, and so that'll help on the trash instead of just the, the wheel-around ones that you see given out by the solid waste district. Are you gonna have both, Drake? You're gonna have a little car?
Absolutely. Well, I mean, every individual unit, just like any other home within the city, within the solid waste district, gets their own garbage can, and they can request a second one. And so that's obviously the primary dispensing option for trash. And then these dumpsters will serve as overflow on heavy weekends or other needs.
Okay. So that's what they're proposing to you, commissioners, on that. So do you have any questions as it relates to those particular items from your tabling?
Drew, I have a question. This is Commissioner Bullock. So at what point does the secondary ax, do we trigger the secondary access? How many homes have to be built before we put in the secondary access?
Well, that's always the question, you know. Like I say, my subdivision ordinance basically states that all subdivisions will have, where at all possible, you know, two ingress and two egress spots. So now, over the years, we've always, you know, had those conversations with developers at different times and when those would come in. And so that's something that just gets worked out between, you know, the commission and the council of when they're going to expect that secondary one in.
Drew, this is Commissioner Bullock again. So are they not taking it through the golf course now?
Yeah, that, this is no longer, let me get that drawing thing there, that's been taken off. You know, that was right through here. You know, it's not exactly where it was, but you know, you remember that
Yeah.
greenish thing, and again, I'm getting really bad at the pencil right now, must be late. But that is gone. You know, off this.
So we don't know where the secondary access will come in from?
Well, at this point right now, no, they haven't given you any, you know, there's nothing on this plat that shows that.
So Drew, this is Drake, the applicant with Cole West Home. If I can kind of add some context to what you have reported and respond specifically to that question. So I was a little slow on my feet a couple of weeks ago and neglected to think about our intent to sprinkle these units. And so after the meeting, we met with the fire chief, Chief Evans, and reported to him that it's our intent, as we have in other nightly rental projects in the city of Washington, to sprinkle these. And so that mitigates the need for secondary emergency access. And so what we talked to him about at that time, and, and the reason why, well, it became a moot point for this particular subdivision. But as we, I think, reported and described last time we were in front of the commission, there's a portion of the same Area Seven in Coral Canyon to, we call it to the north of where we are proposing these, this current preliminary plat. It would be our intent at that point, and this is what we discussed with the chief, to put in the secondary emergency access at that time to provide a secondary means of egress for that northern portion of Area Seven. And it would most likely come on, instead of the, the drawing that we had shown before, it would most likely come on the other side of that kind of area that you're outlining towards the golf course maintenance shed. We proposed that to the chief, and we have some preliminary engineering done with some slopes and grades to meet the international fire code. And it's likely that that will be an option for us, but we'll certainly work that out as we prepare and present plans for the remaining portion of Area Seven. There's an existing access there for the golf course maintenance yard. It's paved for quite a few feet outside of Telegraph, gets to the yard, and then it turns into a golf cart path. And so similar to the other one, we'll work with the golf course to have that secondary mean at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Drew, this is Commissioner Musso. So when I read that, that they were gonna sprinkle these units, that set a flag off to me because it's my understanding that without a sprinkled units, you can have up to ten occupants per unit. And once the unit gets sprinkled, then it's an unlimited number of people that they can put in each of these units at any given time. And with that being said, then that changes everything from the number of units that you want in that particular phase to, because of the parking and everything else. I mean, if you have ninety units and every one of them have even fifteen or sixteen people staying in them, I can see that as being a real nightmare. I mean, ten, when, when you have ten people in each unit, that's still bad because it's still a minimum of at least two vehicles. But if you can get fifteen or twenty, then you're talking four vehicles per unit, you know, on average. So at that point, I mean, I don't, I don't care what the fire department says, you know, yeah, you can, you can have a sprinkled unit and that's your access, but I think you still have, you have other issues involved. And that's my personal opinion. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it, but that's, that's not a solution, in my opinion, for this particular item that we're dealing with.
Drew, this is Commissioner Hanson. I've got a question about the trash pickup, or sorry, the trash. I was at another neighboring city over the weekend in a vacation subdivision, similar to what they're talking about building. I saw the trash cans out, and I saw the overflowing, and all these things I'd never seen before that we, we heard from the public comments previously. Does the city have the capability, if we, to send out a trash truck to particular areas on request to pick up trash? Or are they burdened with as much as they have already, that they have to stick to the routes that they're going right now?
That's kind of tough for me to answer, because that's through the solid waste district. You know, yeah, could you, if you'd be paying for it, you know, there's no doubt about that, but could they, they probably could, they could contract out. I, I mean, I think they could. Again, it's not my, my call, because it's not us picking up the garbage, you know, it's, it's either, you know, one of the two or three companies that, you know, the cities hire out, you know, to do that, which is actually run through the county's landfill.
Yeah, it's because the other, that subdivision I was going through had dumpsters, just like we're proposing here.
Now, now, those are on a routine. Those can be picked up as needed or whatever, the dumpsters can, yes. But the canisters, you know, that are given out, it's a weekly, a weekly pickup.
Right. I guess what I meant to say was, they had dumpsters as well, but they weren't being used to the extent that there were still overflowing trash cans on the street for a number of days, which is the problem that we had based on the public comment for this subdivision as well. So that's what brought up my question is, why can't we just have trash come and pick up on a day that, so it doesn't have to sit out there? It sounds like there's some limitations and the city's not even involved with suggesting that or recommending that anymore. I'm trying to solve the trash issue, because I never realized what a problem it was, and so I really thought about it that, yeah, that's actually true. They come on the weekend, and the trash day is on Thursday, and so the trash sits there, you know, as full as it may be or not from Monday through, or sorry, until Thursday. So it's there for a couple of days. This is kind of segregated in its own neighborhood, so it's not a huge concern for me personally, but I was, I was just wondering why we can't just do that, have the trash come and pick up all the individual trash cans on a Sunday, or sorry, Monday morning, after the holiday weekend.
Yeah, that's something, probably, now, again, this is something you could just, you know, that their HOA could manage for, you know, you, again, these are getting into these things that, you know, garbage cans aren't allowed to be out, you know, longer than the day before and to the day after the standard pickup, where they, you know, shouldn't be out on the street sitting there, you know, Monday through whatever, you know, but that's something, I, I don't know how we would kind of regulate that other than through the HOA, and then they just take care of it, you know, find their people who aren't doing it, you know.
They're not even there, I guess. They're gone. And then the owners.
Each one of these is supposed to have a property management over it, you know, that's why we get into the property management part, why we felt it was so important that we had somebody here that was a property manager. Those are the folks that, you know, are gonna have to make sure that kind of takes place and happens, so.
Drake, Drake, in your opinion, how can we solve the trash problem?
Well, what Drew just raised actually has been something that I've been considering. I think I mentioned to the commission that I'm the president of the Town Center HOA, where this matter has been raised, is kind of a, an example of, of something that, in some people's opinion, isn't ideal. And so I've actually had the thought to do exactly what Drew says. If it's not currently in, in the CCNRs, to put it in the CCNRs where the owners are responsible to have the, the canned out and then removed. And to Drew's point, each of them will have a property manager that could do that if they're not local. So I, I think that is certainly a very So I, I think that is certainly a very reasonable, uh, and doable. Thing that we can implement. And then the other thing are these dumpsters, these. Projects that are here in Coral Canyon, the town center and the eighth do not have dumpster enclosures. I think I reported last time that we're considering at the town center on busy holiday weekends. To bring in a dumpster on a temporary basis to help with that overflow trash. And so. I think having these dumpsters that we pointed out on the preliminary plat. And, uh, and committing, which I'm able and willing to commit to, uh, putting in the CCNRs that the. Uh, responsibility lies with the owners to have the trash cans, uh, brought out and taken back in a timely manner.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, um. So I guess this is partly in answer to your question, um, Commissioner Anderson. So I, I built a, a nightly rental. Uh, community in St. George. And so I kind of went through this process with the same city of St. George and had to answer some of these questions. And one of the things that, that, that they had us do. So we had seventy-eight units and they required us to have four permanent dumpsters in addition to everybody's individual cans. And then the individual cans were picked up, you know, just like everyone else's cans. But the, the four dumpsters. Um, they were picked up on a weekly basis with a private contract that was paid for through their HOA dues. And that was set up to where, you know, the HOA paid for a, a trash. You know, collection company outside of the individual cans and they came in once a week and dumped those four dumpsters. And that's how we handled that over there.
I guess what I saw with this other development, and I, I guess I only can compare the two because their vacation rentals with the same type of issue. Is the dumpsters were in some cases further away than people wanted to walk. And so they just overloaded their individual cans, right? So that's where it looks and appears like this problem is created. So. Any attention given to this, I think will go a long way. Certainly with the new project that we're building here, Drake, but definitely with the other project as well, which. I know that's not on the table for tonight, but that's something that I would, uh, appreciate. You said you're open to it, so I'm happy to put that on as a condition. So we can try to figure.
Well, the, the other thing I'll, I'll quickly add, uh, Mr. Chair is, uh. If we're putting something in the CCNRs along the lines that we just reviewed. Uh, to the point that you just raised, you know, there may be vacationers that. Don't want to get the exercise and go the extra few steps to the dumpster if their canister's full and they just, you know. Wop it on top and it gets blown over. They, they set it on the side. Something we could certainly add in addition to the responsibility for the owners to. Yeah, you know, care for their canisters in a timely manner by, you know, taking them to the street and then bringing them back to the garage. We can also, uh, write something in there that obligates them that they could certainly ask their property, their property management team, the cleaners that come. Because every one of these units is cleaned after us, uh, a stay, right? And so those folks that come and clean, uh, we can put in the CCNRs that the owner will need to instruct them to. Address, you know, any bags of trash or any trash lying around. They can certainly walk the extra steps or being paid to clean the, the, the unit. Over to the dumpster and, and keep it clean and tidy.
Perfect. Yeah, thanks. Just as a commissioner, I'd like to add that when the, the motion is made for tonight, I'd like to add that. They address some of those trash issues like you mentioned. So if you want to make that motion, please add that.
Commissioner Anderson, I, I do have a concern with the trash. I, I, I like that we have the trash enclosures there, but I do have a concern that. The two enclosures for ninety-nine units is possibly not enough. And just because it'd be a long way for some people to, to get anywhere near there. I think maybe four. Be better access to them. I don't know what you guys think.
Was there a reason that the city of St. George made you do four? Was there a certain number you had to have, uh, units per trash?
I don't know if there's anything in the code. That's just what planning commission and it's just kind of the number they came up with, but. But it was mostly because it was evenly spread out all around the, the development. So it was. You know, equal distance for everybody to kind of have access to. That was. Was the reason.
Drake, you have somewhere in this project that you guys feel that you could find another, uh, spot for a dumpster?
Uh, I, I mean, we could certainly look, we have, I mean, obviously the, the, um. Governing, uh, element there is how one of these garbage trucks can access it and, and actually. Uh, you know, affect the removal of the trash. If, if there's not a place that they can drive straight into, then it's some, somewhere that they can't be put. And so we would need to, you know. Consider that. We can certainly look at that, but let me, let me submit this and just to, I mean, we all know every one of these units can have up to two. Solid waste canisters, which is, you know, fairly, fairly, uh. Significant volume for trash. Uh, dumpsters in our mind are an overflow, kind of like a stopgap, right? Where the individual unit canisters. Become full, then the dumpsters are in overflow. And then the other element that I want to submit is. As, um, if, if we're going to look at the worst case scenario and, and maybe that's reasonable. Um, I also would want to submit some kind of a realistic comment. I think it's very unrealistic that every one of these units would be occupied, you know, at any given moment. Um, and so I, I, I just want to, you know, be clear or I simply submit that for consideration. The town center has forty-three, um, units. Uh, we've encouraged as an HOA that, that as a reminder, we've encouraged them if they're having a trash issue to. Order the second canister, which the solid waste department allows them to. It's a, it's a little bit more fee per month to have that. Um, but that certainly has mitigated the trash, uh, uh, clearly. I mean, when I became president of, of the HOA. Trash became an issue and, and we, uh, addressed it by reminding the people that they have the option of getting two dispensers. And so, um, we've seen, uh, an improvement on the trash. The temporary dumpster thing that we just talked about will help that even more. So I just don't know if, um, the, uh, you know, addition of. You know, one more or two more dumpster locations is, is needed and, and just be from a realistic perspective. And then before, just one last comment beforehand, if you look at the dumpster, I, um, locations that we've identified there. These two that are shown on the plat currently are certainly wide enough to, to occupy. Or to have two six yarders occupy. So a six yard dumpster is the typical dumpster that you'd see. Like in a, in a, an apartment complex or maybe a small retail area. It's, it's the smaller bin. Uh, as opposed to a larger one. Those, uh, widths that we have there are certainly, they can certainly, you know, handle two. Each. So we could have four dumpsters there on site with the, with the, I, um, with the locations that we've already identified.
Okay. And I also think I agree with probably your comment about putting something in CCNRs and changing a lot of that too. I just don't see people using the dumpsters as much as we might want them to. Um, so it's going to resort to the cans. And when I saw it with my own eyes and then from a lot of the comments from previously, as you know. A lot of people talk about the trash. So it is an issue. It's legitimate. And putting it in CCNR, I think is the first step to definitely getting the handle on. Um, as an opinion, commissioners, do you have any other questions, um, for staff or? Drew, is this a public comment as well, or is it just a discussion among us?
Well, if someone wanted, you know, because there have been proposals on that, but they could only. Address those things that have been changed. It could be the secondary road. That's the only thing you're going to, you could take comments on if you wanted to open it back up. They can't reiterate things from the last time. It would be just for the elimination of this road and these going to sprinklers.
Okay, there isn't anybody here in the chambers that wants to speak. We've given them ample opportunity to raise their hand and they're just smiling. So it's not going to happen. So there's no public hearing. So the other is just that, uh, and I believe Drake had, uh. Uh, acknowledged the height of twenty-five feet, uh, the last meeting. And so that's something that is going to go on as well, according to what I'm seeing here, correct Drew?
Yeah, but I would make it a condition since they've agreed to it. I'd put it in on your conditions. Make a fifteenth.
So the fourteenth would be trash and fifteenth would be this.
But you have a fourteenth, you'd need, or you could do fifteen and sixteen.
Okay.
Is what you would do.
Drew, this is Commissioner Anderson. Do those, those items about the height restriction and the, the HOA being separate from Coral Canyon? Does that need to be included here as a note on the?
I, I don't want you to put the HOA in because this goes back to our discussion earlier tonight. We stay out of that. They've told you, you know, it's not going to be part of it. They put it on the public record. So if they're, they have issues, the people in the HOA could come back and say, well, you stated in this meeting. You weren't going to do that, you know, but I don't want to get into the city being. Cause then I, I don't want to have a condition that I have to enforce because I'm not supposed to be part of that. And I say I as we as the city. Does that make sense on the HOA?
Yes. So what about the, uh, twenty-five foot height?
I wouldn't, I would make that a condition.
And this is Commissioner Hanson. If I understood correctly, we take that condition for trash out. Because that's them updating CCNRs. We don't want to be a part of it, correct?
Well, the dumpsters, if you, if you're concerned about the dumpsters, you could say that there should be. You know, four of them, two of them at each of these two locations, as Drake's told you that they'll put a six, two six yarders. Within those, those collection sites there.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, you have any other questions?
What, I, I'm still curious to when the secondary access only comes. Once this is done before phase B. Sorry, this is Commissioner Bullet, Kathy. So what, what's the trigger? I mean, is it ninety-nine units before they get that secondary access in? Or before phase B starts or? You know, the emergency access because what if area B doesn't go for a while and you have a medical emergency. Down in this area. Uh, that's my concern.
And that's legitimate, you know, discussion that you can have, you know, and that, that's amongst your commissioners there. I'm sure the council will talk about it too, or you could make a recommendation to the council, you know, to think about that.
This is Commissioner Hanson. The way I understood it in my mind was that this project is going to be allowed with one access that they have. And maybe this is just me thinking that, but the future development for the next part of this would have to have a secondary access.
And that's how we committed to the fire chief when we met with him is when we, it would have, the timing would be with the first. Uh, preliminary plat on phase B, if we're calling it B, but the north portion there. Uh, those construction drawings with the first phase would include the secondary egress. Uh, from area seven to telegraph.
Would that be completed in the first part of, of the next phase?
Uh, I, we would work with the fire chief on, on when the timing would trigger it, but I think it would be. Reasonable and rational to, uh, have it trigger with that first phase.
So, yeah, somebody else can be making motions.
The, the first street going through the, the main street going through is a public. It's the, it's the offshoots of that or private.
Sorry Kathy and Drew, we're just having a discussion here about. In this phase that we're looking at for tonight, the main road going through there is a public street. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's Palm Island Drive. It says.
Okay.
That is correct.
Perfect. Uh, commissioners, do we have anything else that we'd like to discuss? Otherwise, when one of you is ready, I'll entertain a motion on this item. I just have the two additional, uh, condition, one of them being the twenty-five foot height. Being here too, and the other is the. Addition of dumpsters and trash area. Yeah, that's right.
Commissioner Anderson here. Drew, so your condition thirteen here. Is that no longer applicable or is that, that is, it says there will be required a secondary. Emergency access in conjunction with the existing golf cart path located on the south side of the project proposal.
That one could be gone if, you know. On this particular thing, you could, yeah, just take thirteen out, replace it with one of the other ones and then make a fifteen.
Okay, but four and fourteen is still a condition, correct? The thirty-three percent of the units in phase one. Have to have the amenities done by then.
Yeah, that's just, but we've been consistent with all of these multifamily. You know, develops like this, that's been just what we've just carried on. That seems to be always the one that's brought up and that's the number we've come up with. So.
So commissioners, are we clear about the three additional condition? Yep.
Commissioner Anderson, I make a motion. To recommend approval with conditions to the city council. Uh, for the preliminary plat. Approval for the island at Coral Canyon subdivision. With the, the standard twelve conditions as well as. Um, that the, the main amenity is shown in phase one will be required to be completed before thirty-three percent of the units. In phase one receiver certificate, certificate of occupancy. Um, an additional condition that a twenty-five foot height restriction, um, applies. A further condition that the two proposed. Uh, dumpster locations with two six yard cans at each location for a total of four dumpster. Um, to be serviced. Um. By, by the HOA. Um. And further that, uh, the secondary access. Uh, as required for seven B or for the next phase, um, be, be triggered.
In phase one.
In phase one of the next, of the next, uh. Next of seventy.
Kathy, did you get all that? Sound okay or do we need to, um, repeat anything?
Just the last sentence was unclear to me.
I heard him ask me.
The secondary is triggered, then I lost you.
Secondary, uh, fire access. Um, the trigger to begin construction of the secondary fire access is phase one of the, uh, the next development of seventy.
Thank you. Got it.
Yeah, the first by Commissioner Anderson, looking for a second.
Commissioner Bullock, second.
A second by Commissioner Bullock, individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
I.
Commissioner Bullock.
I.
Commissioner Musso.
Nay.
Commissioner Hanson. I'm an I as well. Item nine B passes and we moved on to city council. That concludes the items that we have on the agenda for tonight. I personally had one question I wanted to review with Drew before the meeting ended. If this is okay, or Drew, did you have anything else to add before we? Get to the last question for me from evening? Maybe there's others, but I have one, one question.
No, I'm good. Go ahead.
And the agendas that I have seen, I guess I want to know how those items are put in order as far as how we hear them. I'm wondering if some of the, I feel bad, I guess, for the people that wait here. That have a very small agenda item that goes really quickly and they get put behind something that they have to listen to for two hours. Is there a way to, if we know there's a hot topic or we know there's something that has a lot of public comment, can we put it at the end? So we can get through the others quicker?
Well, you could, but I want, I'd rather you do that each meeting if you feel concerned about that because we have a. We have a layout process, you know, we go from final plats to amended plats to, you know, all the way down in, in the zoning process. You know, tonight you dealt with, everything was plats except for your condition to use permit. You know, and that just falls in, again, we have. You know, that it's just a layout that we use. Now, if you feel like one of them you have concerns about, you guys can amend your. you have concerns about, you guys can amend your, your agenda at the beginning of your meeting and move stuff as you feel that you would want to. And that's what I'd recommend you do. So you don't just, or we don't arbitrarily just end up doing that. And it just being, you know, us doing that for you, I'd just wait each meeting. If you feel like you want to move one, you, you know, a bunch of people are there. You could just kind of ask, hey, what's everybody kind of, you know, just walk through them if you wanted. And then if everybody felt like they wanted to move it up, you could do that at that point.
As the chair, one of the things that I, and I, this is probably me being insecure, but I feel like these meetings lately have gone later and I, I can't tell if it's because we have more agenda items or I'm missing something because I feel like I'm here a lot, lot, which is fine, but I'm trying to figure out a way to make the meeting shorter for everyone.
Chair, let me put it this way. All the easy fruit has been picked off the trees already.
Wow, so I.
Ends to you. So we're, we're dealing in the fruit a little bit higher.
You lulled me for the first year and then you hammered me and say, that's what's happening. Okay.
But that, that's really what it's come down to. You know, we've had a lot more challenging applications because again, the best way I can put it, all the easy stuff's done. You know, now we're getting into harder, you know, more difficult places, locations, changes, because the more people come, you know, there's more people around to come up to, that live from somewhere else that didn't did. That's not the way we did it back in Illinois or Idaho or California or Texas. And we don't like that. And so you just said, the more people you get and the harder properties, it goes longer and it's just a little bit more difficult applications. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast, unfortunately. I get what you're saying though, but that's, that's all the answer I have for you. Cause again, all the easy fruit is gone, the easy stuff's gone.
Well, once again, staff, thank you for everything. Kathy, I promised to read your notes and you put them right in front of me from here on out. That was my bad on that. And anything else commissioners that you have for this evening? Otherwise I look for a motion to close the meeting.
Commissioner Musso, I move that we close the meeting.
And I have a second.
Anderson, second.
All in favor.
Bye.
Thank you and good night.